Our Town Board work session to order. Tonight, we're going to... The goal of this work session is to have the Town Board receive information on topics of Town business from the Town Manager, Town Attorney, and Town Staff in order to exchange ideas and opinions regarding these topics. And the first agenda item is Elected Officials Training with Sam Light from CERSA, who is with us, as well as all the rest of the Town Board members. Nobody's missing tonight, are they?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, so is Sam going to take it from here, or Shane, or Ian, or where?
Yeah, I think Mr. Light has the floor.
Mr. Light? I'll send it to you.
All right, thank you very much. Can everyone hear? Are you seeing me okay? How's the audio? Good? Good? Okay, very good. Headphones sometimes will go out. In this case, thank you all very much for having me up. I hope everyone is safe and doing well, and weathering a storm in these unusual times is fine. So, thank you very much for having me up. I appreciate the opportunity.
I'm going to share my screen in just a minute and go through a presentation for you all. Certainly, if you have questions as we go through the presentation, that would be just fine. Just go ahead and do that. Or if you are more comfortable using the chat feature, I'll try to monitor that as well and can respond there if someone wants to hand that way. Let me switch over to your screen and we'll get started. All right, can everyone see the screen okay?
Yep.
All right. There we go. Very good, but thank you again for having me up. My presentation is called Suggestions for Success for Elected Officials. The title's a little bit longer than that. You'll see I put in parentheses a little more. But the purpose of my presentation is about spending energy and effort on good governance, good civics, good leadership. And I've found over the years in doing these trainings that by and large, if we focus on suggestions for success and doing our job effectively as likely, then by and large, the risk of liability goes away, and that's why I put Suggestions for Success. Oh, and by the way, we can avoid the risk of liability if we do that for you all as elected officials. There's a little bit more information about me. I joined CERSA about two years ago. Before that, I was a municipal attorney for a number of years, representing small to mid-sized cities and towns up and down the Front Range and around the state. Enough about me. A little bit more about CERSA. CERSA stands for the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency. We are your insurance provider. We are not a commercial insurance company. Rather, we are what's called a public entity self-insurance pool. We are owned and represented solely by our members, and our membership consists exclusively of Colorado cities and towns and affiliated entities. Our ownership and representatives is all composed of Colorado cities and towns. Our board is comprised from representatives of Colorado cities and towns, including... We're very proud of the fact that your Town Manager Shane is on our board. So, very much appreciate his service for CERSA. To give you a sense of our size, CERSA has 276 members and affiliated entities. 273 of those are in our property casualty program, and we have another 144 in our workers' compensation program. Most relevant to our discussion today, among the things that we do, of course, our bread and butter is handling risk issues and insurance coverage needs and claims issues for you. But we at CERSA also consider it a win-win, both for our members of the pool. If we can assist you as much or as little as you like in managing your risk issues. So, we take pride in taking a proactive approach to risk management. We do trainings like this. Every member, including the town, has an underwriting representative, a loss control representative, claims representatives, and we have all sorts of resources available to you. Most relevant for you all, I put on the slide there the link to our elected officials' resources on our webpage. And you can find that right on the very first page at cersa.org. If you click down on the Training tab, there's a page dedicated to elected official resources where we have additional articles, webinars, manuals, and other things for you that we hope are of interest to you. One of those, which you can find at that link, and I'm going to hold it up here on the screen, a copy of our most recent handbook for elected officials called Ethics Liability and Best Practices Handbook for Elected Officials, which was republished last year. And our target audience for that handbook is you all. So, you can find that through the website. We can also get you hard copies of the document. We hope it's helpful to you. We've written it with you all in mind as elected officials. We've tried to go light on the legalese and insurance language and hopefully heavy on good suggestions regarding the issues that you face as elected officials and tips for dealing with those from a risk management perspective. On this next slide, just to give you a little bit more sense of CERSA and our pride and our mission, and probably to give you a little more color to the slides too, because the rest of my slides are black and white. But we went through a very interesting exercise at CERSA last year regarding recommitting ourselves to our vision statement. And yes, risk management and handling your claims, that's our bread and butter. That's where we do the heavy lifting for you. And in our mission, this is a storyboard version of our mission statement where we tell a story about who we are and who we serve. And in the mission statement, the word "risk" appears quite a bit. We take care of your risk and your claims, but we're very proud of the fact that this mission statement that we arrived at organically with the participation of all of our employees and the leadership of the board, we include in this, the word "risk" is here a number of times, but the word that appears more often is "community." And so, we're very proud of the fact that we represent and assist towns like Windsor with their risk needs and help them build community. Right there about in the center of the slide, we view it as our mission to provide Colorado municipalities with the knowledge, guidance, and resources they need to effectively manage risk, take care of the bread and butter issues, but also to create the conditions for their communities and citizens to thrive. So, as much or as little as you'd like us to help further the goals of your community, please know we're there to assist where we can. All right, a little bit of an overview of my presentation. I've organized it around suggestions for good governance, really best practices, which will in turn reduce the risk for the town and for you individually as elected officials. The training is based on our years of experience in dealing with claims and risk issues on behalf of elected officials. Recognize that my training is a, just that, is a training only. We may get to questions and answers, and you may ask me a question in my, I call it my radar. If it sounds like the question you have is about a burning issue that's going on, you know, here and now, the burning issue of the day in Windsor for which you need legal advice or staff support, I'll probably push back a little bit on that and I'll give you my suggestions. But when my radar detector goes off and it sounds like that's the live issue for today, just a reminder that you'll want to check in with your Town Attorney's Office and your staff. And I think that my suggestions are going to overlap with the suggestions that Ian and the folks in the City Attorney, Town Attorney's Office provide you. But if there's any inconsistency between my thoughts on some issues and your Town Attorney's advice, their view controls, and you can blame that all on me, okay? So, to get started with my suggestions for you as leaders on behalf of your community, suggestion one, recognize the change in roles that you take on. Good reminder for everyone, but particularly for the newly-elected folks. Remember that when you become a public official on behalf of the town, you're no longer just a citizen of the town of Windsor. You're a public official and you don't give up your private life, but I'm sure the mayor will test and many of you on the board will test. It's a 24/7 job, right? Sometimes it's the phone call at 10:00 PM from a citizen, or people bump into you at the grocery store or out and about town. They view your role as a 24/7 job, and they're always perceiving you as an official of the city. So, keep that in mind, how you interact with citizens and what you say to them will always be perceived as the voice of a public official when you're talking about town matters. Recognize also that once you became a member of the Board of Trustees, you're no longer an outsider to town government. You're now the ultimate insider. You may have come to public service because you were a critic or a proponent of a particular issue or had a small group of issues that interested you most. Recognize now that on the Board of Trustees, you're a representative of the board on behalf of the board and the community with regard to all issues that come in front of you as a trustee. And we've found over the years that it's a good suggestion to take that broad approach and be a good representative of the town on behalf of all the issues that come in front of you as a trustee, irrespective of whether you have particular areas of interest. And that's the fascinating thing. You've got a lot of different and varied subject matter that you cover, everything from tax to land use to running various city departments, a water system, utility, so on and so forth. So, keep that broader focus and that will serve you well. Particularly to the new folks, but everyone, I'm sure that very recently, some of you took the oath of office. So, congratulations for that. Remember, everyone, it is always good to check in on our oath and what that entails because your oath of office has meaning for you as elected officials legally, ethically, and morally, right? And when we took the oath of office, we made a commitment to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the State of Colorado and the town's charter and ordinances. Part of our presentation today is we're going to check in on what does that oath of office embody, right? Among the commitments that you make when you take the oath of office is to respect the boundaries and the allocation of responsibilities set by law. Recognize and appreciate, we'll talk more about this in a minute, the understanding that within the municipal organizational structure, everyone's got a job description, whether it's the Town Board members, or the Town Manager, or staff, or volunteers. Everyone plays a role, and that's important for the health of the organization and also to manage risk. Your oath of office also includes a commitment to lawful conduct, including following constitutional requirements that apply to how you do business, to following the town's criteria in making decisions, to providing your citizens and constituents with due process. We're going to touch briefly on that. But you remember the old provision in the Constitution, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law." You have, as elected officials, items that you're going to make decisions on that are going to affect people's property rights, most commonly land use or licensing decisions. And for those matters, at the local government level, the Town Board are the seven individuals who are responsible for providing due process. So, we'll talk about what that means and how we support each other in that regard. Your oath of office, now that you're a government official, includes a commitment to ethical practices. You're now all subject to a code of ethics that addresses requirements for you in handling conflicts of interest, how to handle confidential information, whether you're allowed to accept gifts, and so on and so forth. We'll talk very briefly about that. Finally, maybe it doesn't flow from the oath as neatly as the other three that I just mentioned, but recognize as part of the change in role that one, once you're elected to the Town Board, you're elected to be but one member of a seven-member body that has one voice, right? The Board of Trustees, though it's made up of seven individuals, ultimately exercises its power, gives its direction, makes its decisions, exercises authority with one voice. And so, it must naturally flow from the oath that as trustees, we make a commitment to each other to have respect and courtesy for each other, to appreciate each other's divergent viewpoints and styles and opinions. It ought to always be easy, right? Some nights, you might have some issues where it's a 4-3 vote, and other nights, it's a 7-0 vote. But through that process, we have to appreciate the point that we can be in areas of disagreement without being disagreeable, and that's part of the commitment to working together as a board. Recognize that whatever your role was to the town previously, you're now kind of analogous to the Board of Directors of a corporation. And at that 40,000-foot level as the board, overarching objective is protection of the town's interest and assets. Just like the Board of Directors of a corporation, that's probably the highest level way of looking at your job as elected officials, is protection of the town's interest and assets. From that high-level perspective, the guiding principle in your decision-making should always be, what is the right thing to do for the town, for the town, for the law? Not always easy, right? Some nights, you're going to have, perhaps during public comment, a very, very vocal group, very small, but very vocal group of citizens that's wanting you to do this right now. And maybe they're pounding the podium and saying, "Do this, do this, do this." And you've got to make a decision tonight, and you may be thinking from the desk there as a trustee, this doesn't feel... Or maybe you're thinking, you know, if I bet if we make that decision and do what they're asking tonight, this will be back in our lap in a month. If you're having that sense, recognize that one of your strongest powers and one of your greatest prerogatives as board is to take the time that you need and to get the information that you need to make a decision that you're comfortable with, that you believe as a board will stand the test of time, and that meets that objective, what's the right thing to do for the town. Now, keep that in mind, and that will certainly serve you well. Recognize as elected leaders that part of your oath and part of your job duties is to deliver good governance or good leadership, which at its core depends on a couple of probably core civics principles, but also they translate into risk or legal issues. And what I mean by that is if we commit ourselves to the principles that are on the left-hand side of the slide, then by and large, the corresponding legal issues and risk issues that are on the right-hand side of the slide will take care of themselves, right? If we commit ourselves to openness and transparency, you will have few and many problems under the open meetings law or the open records laws. For example, do we recognize, right, that the emails that we send as wearing our Town Trustee hat, that those are by and large public records that can be requested and viewed by third parties? So, recognize and respect those concepts of transparency. Commit ourselves to fundamental fairness, right? In everything we do, follow town processes, make sure we give proper notice that people who have an interest in a matter have an opportunity to speak. And if we commit ourselves to fundamental fairness, we'll have very few problems under the due process clause or very few due process challenges to the decisions that we make. Commit yourselves to being predictable. You may have some decisions once in a while where it didn't really go as planned, and the rules ended up being different than what you thought they were or where you would really like them to be. But recognize that when you have ordinances in place or rules in place that guide your decision-making, you don't want to change those on the fly, particularly when it's a due process hearing and we're making decisions about somebody's property rights. You might have the ability to change those rules later on. You still have to go through a process to do that, but you certainly don't want to change rules on the fly in a way that upsets people's expectations or worship that upsets their rights. And then finally, commit yourselves to mutual respect with each other as trustees, with the citizens that you interact with, with staff. We get it at CERSA. It's a tough, it's a tough job being elected officials, and you're going to have some tough evenings, some late evenings. You have some tough hearings, some tough policy decisions to make where you'll be at a hearing and you'll be getting very heated input from many different sides, five, six, seven different perspectives on an issue. And that's that point in time where we again recognize that being an elected official is a job where you're not going to make 100% of the people happy 100% of the time, right? But if you have one of those contentious hearings or contentious evenings, if your citizens or constituents go home from that and they think to themselves, you know what? I get it. I get it now. That board has got a tough job. They had to take those five, six, or seven different perspectives. They had to take all that heated testimony. They had to go through it. They had to distill that down to a single decision. I may disagree with their decision until the end of time as a policy matter, but I feel like I was heard. I feel like I was respected. I feel like every participant, no matter what perspective they had, got a fair shake. If we end up with those kind of observations by our citizens or leave them with that sense of mutual respect, set aside how much we've done to take care of the legal issues, but just how much trust we've built with our community about how we lead. So, if we commit ourselves to mutual respect, it'll build your credibility in the eyes of your constituents, and your legal issues will fall away because most people then, if they go home from a heated board meeting with that sense, they're much less likely to go home thinking, well, that wasn't a good hearing, and I didn't feel like I was heard, and that process was all jacked up. So, now I'm going to find some way to challenge what the board did. And that's a much worse outcome than the one that I described previously. So, mutual respect, we've found over the years, critically important to doing your job. All right, let me put it just a little bit here and talk about your own liability risks because it's a fair question. When you take the oath of office, I hope it wasn't, you know, your first question to Ian upon taking office, but, you know, can I get sued in this job as an elected official? And the answer is, oh, yeah, you can, right? But let me give you some comfort here about what protections you have here. And then I'll talk a little bit about the downside, which I call my Grim Reaper slides, just to explain the kind of dark side of the liability equation, but then I'll end on a high note. So, the answer to the question, can I get sued in this job, is yes. Elected officials can be subject to liability. What I'm going to talk about here is whether you have protection from individual liability. You know, the question being, can someone sue me individually and try to hold me personally liable for something that I do as a board member? So, remember in Colorado, we have this statute called the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act. And here, I'm talking about whether someone can sue you in state court for damages. Maybe they felt like you defamed them at a public meeting. So, this statute says that the town, and by extension, Town Insurance Company CERSA, will defend you and pay judgments and pay judgments against you for acts or omissions that you take as a trustee. That sounds pretty good so far, but there's a catch. So long as, right? You're acting within the scope of your employment and not acting in a willful and wanton manner. So there's two phrases there that are of some interest. For its scope of employment, you may be thinking, what does that mean to me because I'm a trustee? That's just a phrase that's used under the Colorado law. And all it really means is a takeaway is that everyone needs to understand and abide by their particular role within the organization. Everybody has a job description. The other phrase that's odd there is willful and wanton. And that simply means conduct that is intentionally undertaken with an intent and a design to harm someone with reckless disregard for their rights. The even simpler way of describing willful and wanton conduct is, is bad stuff, right? Don't use your cloak of governmental authority to do bad stuff and you'll be fined from a liability perspective. Those kinds of situations are few and far, far between, but they're, they're out there. And so you have to be careful of that and make sure you're staying well within the bounds of proper exercise of your authority as a government official, right? The willful and wanton concept is also very important from a liability risk standpoint, because your insurance follows the same principles. It basically says this insurance will defend you and pay judgments entered against you for actions that you take as a public official, as long as those actions are within the course and scope and weren't willful and wanton. So obviously, for example, there's no public officials liability coverage for you for committing a crime or for engaging in fraud or engaging in malicious acts. So just recognize that once you go way outside the boundaries and are engaging in conduct of the pale, beyond the pale, if some injured party thinks that you were misusing your public authority, that's how you can get exposed to an individual liability claim. Finally,
Hey, Sam?
Yes.
This is Shane Hale. Hey, I was going to say, could you give the, the board members, a couple of town board members, just a couple of examples of, of willful and wanton behavior? Because it, because it's such an important concept, I think it would just be good to let them kind of get a sense of what that can look like.
Yeah. Proceeding in the face of an undisclosed conflict of interest to try and conscript staff into doing wrong things to the wrong reason to a competitor or a political enemy. An example of a case like that is, we had a situation once where elected officials got overly involved in permitting matters and were trying to direct the police officials and building officials to make inappropriate inspections or deny permits, putting pressure on people to deny permits or making decisions without following proper process, right? Criminal acts, right? Aren't covered and will expose you to individual liability, right? Maliciously going after someone wearing that cloak of authority. Let's say you've got a political enemy and your whole intent or motive here is, well, I'm going to go to the business licensing department and make sure this person doesn't get their business license renewed, right? If those kinds of facts are swirling in the background, what's that all sound like? Right? That's bad stuff. Right? So the takeaway, and clearly we're going to stay far away from it, but make sure we don't misuse our cloak of governmental authority to do bad things to people for the wrong reasons, because that's where you can get exposed to individual liability. And those fact patterns that I just described are ones where elected officials have been named in civil rights complaints or other lawsuits, you know, for having taken individual action that was clearly a misuse of governmental power. Okay, was that helpful?
Yes. Sorry, I moved away. Yeah, that, that certainly was, at least for me, but I, I would ask a question more to the newly elected folks on the call.
Anyone else have a thought or question about that? The last thing is to recognize that if it's a really bad situation and you misuse your governmental authority to injure someone and it's deemed to be intentional conduct, willful and wanton, you can be exposed to liability for punitive damages and punitive damages are not insurable. And so that's again, all the more reason to make sure you stay far and wide of bad stuff. You're going to see it, we hope. You know, you're going to see it long before it ever lands on your doorstep. But you do need to keep your senses attuned to that, that there is a liability risk for you individually, if you're doing a wrong thing, wrong, wrong thing for the wrong reasons with malicious intent, okay? Now, my silver lining on the liability stuff, that's kind of my Grim Reaper slides. You need to recognize you can be exposed potentially for individual liability if you're misusing governmental power. But the flip side of that is, don't let the fear of liability drive your decision-making in and of itself, right? You might have a hearing or a meeting some night where it's a contested he, hearing, it's a hot conversation. If you know, and you've got the proper support from your staff and the right advice from counsel, and you know that you're making the right decision for the right reasons through a fair and defensible process, then don't stray the course just because someone's threatening you with litigation, right? That's why you've got insurance behind you. And of course, if you whipsaw and change your decision just because someone's threatening suit against you, you may end up in a tough spot anyway, right? So don't let the fear of liability drive your decision-making, but recognize there is potential individual exposure, particularly if you're doing things outside, you know, on your own, right? And it hasn't been clearly authorized to you, okay? So here are some tips, building on that. Here are some tips for avoiding personal liability risk. Understand the job description and stay within it. Right? A couple examples may not get as bad as being like within the willful and wanton context, but here's some examples of understanding the job description and staying within it, you know, easy example, who writes within the town of Windsor Indian Municipal Court? That's obvious enough. The police do that. That's their job. Flip side of that, your job isn't it? The elected officials. Right? And believe it or not, once in a while, over the many, many years of we've had situations where lurking in the background were factual allegations that elector-appointed officials were trying to direct actions of the police department. Not a good place to be. That's bad stuff, right? So just recognize the job description and stay within it. Recognize that as trustees, you're part of a collection, collective decision-making body. But there is but one board. It's not a correct analogy that each board member holds one-seventh of the power and therefore, you know, by darn it, I'm going to go out and use my one-seventh, put my cloak of authority on and use my one-seventh of the board's power. Look at your code of rules. They always say the power is exercised by the board. So protect yourself in that regard. Whenever you feel the need for a decision, first ask yourself, is this a board issue? Then let's take it to the board and that'll help protect you. Recognize that you do your job primarily by meeting and voting in public meetings and acting as a body. And there's great protection in that because you're acting as a group. Very hard to be subject to allegations of inappropriate individual conduct when it's a decision that's reached by the board as a body in a meeting.
Sam, this is Jeff Humphries. I see that Mr. Sislawski has his hand up. He might have a question. Can we pause for a second?
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah. Hey, Sam, how are you?
Hi.
You know, when you play in this area of particularly defensive officers of a company and otherwise, one of the things that was always discussed is the cost of defense. Because the, the issues around whether you're acting within your job description or whether you're being willful or wanton are issues that may have to be settled at trial. Does the coverage though defend that elected official as those issues are determined? And obviously, depending on how that comes out, it may be that, that the policy doesn't cover it, but it's the cost of defense covered en route, I guess.
Right. Yeah, we, in most cases, yes, but it's going to depend on the allegations of what comes in. But what you hinted at is on my prior slide, I skipped over it. Quite often we'll get allegations that will come in. They may include an allegation of willful and wanton conduct, but that'll trigger a defense under a reservation of rights. And we would send a reservation of rights letter to the individuals involved and tell them there's coverage here, but we reserve our right if it exists to not pay the judgment, if it turns out that the liability and the damages actually flowed from willful and wanton conduct. So in a lot of cases, we'll be looking at the issue of whether there's a defense owed under a reservation of rights. And that's how those individual types of allegations are handled.
Well, you may not cover the damages. Would, would the individual have to reimburse you for the cost of defense? As under the
Yeah, there's language in our policy that gives us the right to do that, but it's rarely if ever used. Let me give you one twist on one other coverage scenario as well. We have sexual harassment and sexual molestation coverage. For that line of coverage, there's coverage for the individual actor only if the entity, the city or town decides that they want that coverage to be provided. So that's the one area where there's an upfront decision made by our insured as to whether they want the duty to defend or the defense to be available for the individual. In other circumstances where it's triggered, we will provide the defense, subject to the town's deductible. Quite frankly, willful and wanton cases are rare. Ones that go to trial are rare. Ones that go to elected officials are rare. You stack all three on top of those, it's very, very rare that we get one of those cases. But yes, we do on paper, reserve our right if insured asks us to, to consider a recoupment of legal fees. But in practical terms, the defense is provided under a reservation of rights and those defense costs end up being stranded cost.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Thank you for the question. Appreciate it very much. Okay, so to wrap up, suggestion two, just another real-life example or two, another particularly riskier area that we see is elected officials getting involved in personnel decisions that are entrusted to someone else. That can be a real liability radar issue for you, right? We may have like an employment claim that comes in and we'll go to supervisor, maybe to give you an example, maybe it's someone in public works department got fired and their supervisor is the public works director. And so we'll have our defense attorneys go to the director and say, why did this person get fired? And the director might, you know, be a surprise to us, but they'll say, well, I didn't, I didn't want that person fired. That's not a good place to start an employment claim. And on rare occasion, while a case comes in and we'll ask the follow-up question, we'll say, well, what, what's going on then? Well, I didn't want to fire him, but you know, there were some appointed officials and some other department heads and some members of the governing body that didn't like that guy, so they told me to fire him. That's the kind of situation where you can get exposed, right, and get yourself ensnared individually in one of those kinds of cases. So be careful of that. If, if you're at a board meeting and you report to your fellow trustees, you know, that between last meeting and tonight meeting, tonight's meeting, I went out and did this. If everybody else's reaction is, you did what? That's another tip to remember. You got to step back and understand what individual roles are for us as trustees. All right, suggestion three, honor transparency. We're going to talk in a minute about confidentiality as well, but recognize that as elected officials, you're now subject to the open meetings law and the open records law and equally important, you're subject to your citizens and constituents' expectation of transparency. So whether you ever get a risk issue or a claim issue bubbling up, recognize that your constituents are very appreciative of the things that you do for transparency. And when they appreciate that, the risk of being challenged on transparency goes way down. So they'll appreciate whatever you put on your website, whatever you put out to remind them of the things going on in the town. Those are all great resources. They may not always pack your meeting room. They may not be there every night, but they're still watching, right? And if they have the convenience of getting the information that they need through your website or through other public information that you put out, that'll, that'll be a great thing for you all. All right, I'm going to talk very briefly here about the Colorado Open Meetings Law. The veterans on the board will know the rule here, but it's a good refresher for everyone. The Colorado Open Meetings Law is fairly complex, so we're not going to do all of it. I just want to hit on the main rule that you all as trustees face. So remember, in Colorado, we're subject to the Colorado Open Meetings Law and it's got two main rules. The first one basically says that whenever three or more trustees gather to discuss public business, that's a meeting that's open to the public. And the second half of the rule is whenever four more, whenever one more member, whenever four more trustees are going to have a meeting to discuss public business or they're going to take some kind of action, then there also has to be full and timely notice, which your staff takes care of, right? So recognize also that for that rule, a gathering is any kind of a meeting is any kind of gathering in being in person by phone or by electronic means like we're doing right now. And all of those have to be open to the public. Okay? There are certain limited exceptions. You know, I don't know which one of you on the board hosts the annual barbecue for the trustees, but if you do that, right? The open meetings law doesn't apply to social gatherings, but only if it's strictly social, right? That sort of event cannot become a proxy for a board meeting, right? So keep, keep that in mind. Recognize in this day and age that with electronic communication and now that we're in the pandemic mode, that all these forms of electronic communication can also trigger meetings requirements, right? So whenever three or more members of the board want to exchange email about public business or want to discuss the policy issues on the next agenda, that can all trigger open meetings requirements, okay? So keep those things in mind. I've got a handout for you all on effective use of email that I will send up to you, but just recognize that the same principles apply to emails, that it would be improper under the open meetings law for three or more trustees to be emailing each other back and forth before the meeting, saying, what do you think of this agenda item? How are you going to vote on that? You don't want to use electronic communications as a substitute for having a meeting that's properly noticed by the proper channels, be it in your boardroom or through this type of form that we're using today, okay? Also on email, be cautious and circumspect in your use of email. Even if only two of you are emailing each other back and forth on an issue, maybe that doesn't trigger an open meeting requirement. But unless that email can be a public record that's open to inspection by citizens and they can go to the town clerk's office and ask for copies of emails that you send or receive as a public official and recognize that by and large, the emails that you send or receive that relate to the town's public business or town money are public records, okay? Let's talk now about confidentiality. Before I, well, let's put the scenario up and while you're reading that, I'll just ask if there are any questions about the open meetings law, the two basic rules.
Mr. Lloyd, I'm seeing none.
All right, thank you. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just said, you're welcome.
Thank you. Recognize on the side of this that sometimes there is a legitimate need for confidentiality and in certain limited circumstances, it is both defensible and appropriate for the town board to meet in a private setting. But recognize that those topics are very limited and you have to follow proper procedures to do that. And you can only do that at a town board meeting. But let's go through the scenario. Let's say you're in executive session, right? The town board can have executive session for limited purposes after you follow the proper procedures. Let's say we go into executive session because the board decided it was worthy of an executive session to develop a strategy for negotiating a piece, a purchase of parkland. We get into executive session, it's just the seven of us. Maybe the manager, the attorney, the parks director in my scenario. And we're in there because we want to negotiate the purchase of a piece of land. State law allows us to go into executive session for purposes of developing a strategy for the negotiation and instructing our negotiators. So in the executive session, we look at the confidential appraisal report for a piece of property that we want to purchase. And we decide that our, in the executive session, our direction is that the town manager and the parks director should meet with the landowner and negotiate for a contract of up to four hundred thousand dollars in my scenario. Board member Smith sees the landowner at the coffee shop the next day and human nature being what it is and eager to get the deal moving, tells the landowner Tells the landowner, hey, you know, we talked about your property last night. And the city is willing to go to 400,000 and I think they may be willing to go higher because the appraiser thinks it's worth up to 425,000. Do we have problems? Yeah. Now, I always ask when I do these presentations live, that you can, you know, chime in, who's the injured party in this situation? Right? The town. The town, right? From a legal standpoint, is the town going to sue its town because someone let the cat out of the bag on the executive session? Maybe not. But the real injury, I think, is to the trust that the trustees have in one another, right? So for executive session matters, remember that, you know, if we decide as a board, whether it's a four, three vote or a seven O vote, but if we decide as a board that it's important enough to go into executive session because we want to have a confidential discussion about a topic, we have to commit to each other that we're going to maintain that information in confidence. I know that sometimes the executive sessions at the end of the meeting, it's late and there's a lot of discussion that occurs to develop a strategy. But I always recommend to you that at the end of that executive session, go around the room one more time and maybe the mayor is asking the group. Of all the confidential information we've discussed at this executive session, which information, if any, leaves this room? And who are our spokespeople? And then as board members, we all commit to that way of protecting our information, right? Because if we decided it's important enough to keep it confidential in the first place, we'll need to honor mostly to each other, but also as our fiduciary obligation to the town. I recognize it isn't easy sometimes. You know, people see on your agenda, executive session about this or that agreement. And heck, sometimes they're waiting at the door. What'd you talk about? That's the situation where you all want to be on the same page about protecting confidential information and documents too. I mentioned in appraisal here that appraisal is confidential until a certain point in the transaction or until the time that you as a board agree that you want to treat that information as confidential. Same thing with attorney client communications. There's a reason your attorney's office will be giving you a privileged attorney client communication. And you, only seven of you are the recipients of that document, and that's for a reason. And that's to protect the interest of the town and your interest in representing the town. So don't disclose any confidential documents unless you as a board decide by proper action as a board that some portion is now okay to be disclosed, right? So protect confidential documents. If you have any uncertainty about it, just ask. Sometimes you may get a background document, not sure whether it's something that's public's going to view or not, just ask your manager or attorney, hey, that confidential background memo that you sent us on the redevelopment plan, is that confidential? Is that just for our eyes or is that in the convince yourselves to all being on the same page about those kinds of issues. Any questions about transparency? All right, suggestion four, honor due process. We're only going to touch the tip of the iceberg here. We're going to be posting up to the service website, a virtual webinar, which is additional basic training on due process. But I just want to touch on a couple of points here. So you have a very interesting job as elected officials because some days, some days you're making legislation and you're making policy. And you're just making general policy pronouncements that are going to apply to, you know, everyone in general on a forward looking basis. Maybe you're just amending the animal control ordinances to set a new rule on animal limits or something like that. That's a legislative act, right? That only affects people in the abstract, is kind of forward looking in perspective. But as you know, you're going to have on your agenda a different type of matter, which is called quasi judicial matters. And this reaches back to our discussion of the due process clause. For quasi judicial matters, these are things like land use applications or licensing decisions. These are the ones where you got a specific applicant, specific case in front of you, where you're going to be making a decision that affects that individual's specific interest in property or their property rights. And that's where it's called a quasi judicial matter, where you basically have to walk and talk like a judge. And the underpinning of all that is the due process clause. You'll know it when it's on you, because you'll see it on your agenda, on your agenda titles, it'll say this is a legislative matter, a quasi judicial matter. But in this role, there are additional rules of engagement that apply and you have to be the ones that provide due process. And the key characteristics that apply in that process is for quasi judicial matters, you're going to have a hearing. Right? Everybody who's interested in that matter is going to get notice of the hearing. And you're duty bound to make a decision based on the evidence that you hear at that hearing. Okay? You got a couple of those on your last agenda. I think you got a couple more coming up, like a development plan approval, that's a quasi judicial matter, a subdivision request, a rezoning request. Those are all quasi judicial matters where there's different rules of engagement that require you to do a couple of things differently. So here are some tips for quasi judicial matters. Make sure that you only consider your land use applications and your quasi judicial matters at the duly noticed public hearing. And you don't want to discuss those as a board outside of the hearing. Sometimes you're going to have the hotly contested land development and, you know, we recognize as everybody else knows in town wants to talk about it. You have to wait until you can discuss it as a board at the public hearing. Okay? Before that time, make sure that you remain fair and unbiased. Because you have to walk and talk like a judge for these. You don't make up your mind before the hearing, right? Don't participate in the public hearing on a land use matter if you have a conflict of interest. Right? Quasi judicial matters are ones where we have to set our own personal biases and personal preferences aside. We may have a development application that's in front of you and you're looking at and you're going, I don't like this application. I'm going to vote no because I just don't like the way it looks. Right? Or I'm just opposed to another application for a bank. Right? Those kinds of personal policy perspective, you have to set aside and make your decision based solely on your land use development criteria that apply for that particular case. And then finally, most importantly, with land use applications, you have to wait until the matter is ripe and only discuss it at the town board hearing. You shouldn't engage in conversations with people before the hearing, no matter what side they're on, right? And you shouldn't be emailing each other as trustees about that matter before the hearing. Again, this all flows from the due process clause that requires you, you give people a fair and impartial hearing and a fair and impartial decision, right? Let me, on that last bullet item, we call that ex parte communications. Let me break that down a little bit more. Obligation as a trustee for quasi judicial matters is to avoid outside the hearing discussions, interested parties about the subject matter of the hearing. Just like a judicial proceeding, if your land use hearing is loaded up with evidence that the board members were involved before the public hearing, or were talking to the proponents or the opponents before the hearing, that's a sure path to having your decision challenged, but as important from a constituent standpoint to have trust in the entirety of your process of voting, right? It's almost to drive home the point, it's as simple as this. If, if you or I trustee Wilson were in a private litigation and our trial was tomorrow, our due process expectation tonight is that neither one of us is with the judge the night before, right? Asking the judge, hey, judge, how's it looking? You're going to rule for me, right? At a local government level, you have kind of the same obligations as a judge in a judicial proceeding. We know it's not easy. We know sometimes your citizens are going to call you and say, I want to talk to you about that controversial development that you got on the agenda next week. But you have to push back on that and tell them, I'm sorry, I can't engage with you about that. I can't talk to you about that land use hearing. We'd love to hear from you, but I can only hear from everybody who's interested in that matter at the public hearing. We'd love it if you'd like to come to the hearing. You can email your comments into our town staff and they'll make sure I get copies of your comments. But I simply can't talk to you about it outside of the hearing because in the interest of fairness, everyone has to be in the same room when we talk about this issue. So that's a key job for you as a quasi judge. Okay?
Sam, can I interrupt here? We, Sam, we have another question from Mr. Sizlovski.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Hi, Sam. Can you, maybe you and Ian perhaps together, somewhat for my own benefit, but certainly for the new board members. What starts the clock ticking on the due process? So you mentioned, for instance, we'll see an agenda in the meeting that'll say, you know, quasi judicial matter, blah, blah, blah. But of course, we don't see that agenda often for two or three days before the meeting. When in fact, they may have filed the application weeks before, if not longer. So what, when does that clock start ticking and how do we as board members know?
Right, right. Ian, would you like to make a comment first or I can go?
Sure, I'll, I'll step in. Thank you, Sam. This is Ian McCarger. I think it's pretty well established that the bright line is that an application for a land use approval has been filed. Now, elected officials don't often know that. But once you're on the board a little while, you'll understand, and Sam's been pretty clear about it. They are generally land use cases where it's a particular property owner who's trying to get a particular kind of approval for the use of that property. And if someone approaches you and wants you, wants to talk about it, you should pass off on that conversation. Check with staff to find out if an application has been filed. In most cases, what I say is there's a bright line there. If an application has not been filed, you're not legally prohibited from talking about it, although you should still use caution.
And in addition to that line, I also recommend kind of a whiff, and Ian hinted it is it's a whiff sensation that you're going to develop as a trustee. If someone says to you, can I take you to lunch and, you know, talk to you about development generally in the town? And then you, you get to lunch and instead of just talking about the vision statement in your comprehensive plan about, you know, we're a community that fosters sustainable development, this person says, well, can I talk to you about, you know, my, my property along the highway there? I'm thinking about rezoning it, right? Now we're getting a whiff of something that sounds like it's going to be an application. Right? So when you have that whiff coming across too, that's when I think you also want to tell the person, look, it sounds like something that I may see as an application down the road, and I think it's best that we not talk about that. I'm happy to talk to you about broad concepts. But I have to remain detached and neutral on matters that are going to come in front of us in terms of an application. And nine times out of 10 or 99 times 10 out of 100, they're going to respect that. You know, if you just say to them point blank, look, I don't want to be taken out of the game here and deprived of my ability to deliberate on this and cast a vote if someone accuses you and I of having an improper conversation about this particular piece of property outside the hearing. So let's just hold the specific discussion of any particular case until it's ripe in front of, in front of you, right? Yeah. So it can be frustrating. We get it that, you know, sometimes very high profile items and everybody wants to talk to you about it in advance. But recognize with that power, right? Take comfort in the fact that only, at the end of the day, only seven citizens of town of Windsor get to make that final decision on that case. But with that power goes the obligation to make sure we steer clear of those improper kind of contacts that can be fodder for allegations of prejudgment or lack of fairness on your part. Okay? Any further thoughts or questions on that? All right, just to wrap that up, here's the contrast, that point about ex parte communication. So in my earlier example, if you've got just a general legislative matter that changed the animal control ordinance, that's just a prospective policymaking item. It's okay to lobby, be lobbied. You can call your constituents who are pro animal or anti animal and say, come on out to the meeting because tonight's the big night where we're going to decide the changes for animal control ordinance. And you can make your decision based on your own personal perspectives. I don't want more animals. I do want more animals. All of that's just fine on legislative matters. But see the contrast for quasi judicial matters, just like a judge presiding over a trial. You have to stay away from lobbying or being lobbied. You have to base your decision on the evidence. You have to apply, apply the appropriate decision making criteria. And you cannot engage with interested parties outside of the hearing. My final tip on due process matters is recognize the power and importance how much your, your citizens appreciate your discussion of the evidence once you're done with the hearing. And this even applies to your policymaking item. When you're ready to make a decision, when your constituents hear you deliberating, right? Now they're going to get an understanding of what your position is. Everybody who's interested in that matter is going to understand how you're applying the criteria in this particular case. Right? So we always encourage you, have great deliberations. Build great trust with your constituents. It also, in those quasi judicial matters, helps you build a record of why you're making the decision that you're making, right? Sometimes it's a little bumpy. You may have a development application that comes in and great hearing, a lot of differing testimony on, and a lot of issues in play. You bring it back and the mayor says, okay, let's, let's talk about it as a board who'd like to start. And I say, hey, board members, I'm just going to, I'm going to vote no because I don't like it. Not a great start. But we can get there and I would suggest you just use what I call Sam's rule of why. If we as trustees begin asking each other why, we are just naturally going to unpackage a conversation that's going to drill down on our criteria and we're going to start having a discussion of the defensible and valid reasons for our decision. So I say, I just don't like it. Another trustee is going to say to me, Sam, why don't you like it? Well, I don't like it because the applicant's a jerk. No, not a relevant criteria. Not part of our decision making. Well, I don't like it because it's too tall. And another trustee says, well, can you explain yourself? And then staff may say, well, yeah, our staff report already said the height limit's 45 feet and they're asking for 60 feet. By just asking each other, why do you feel that way? Why is that your perspective? You can see that we're naturally going to build a great record. It's a much better than just having the hearing closed and making a motion without any discussion. So we always encourage that for you. Okay? Question five, put ethics first as elected officials, right? Ethical scandals are few and far between. They're always exciting to read about in the paper when it's some other jurisdiction. But recognize that we're all bound by a code of ethics when we become elected officials. Ethical transgressions, as I just pointed out, can make for fiery headlines, right? But they can also potentially result in criminal civil liability in egregious cases. And recognize that if there's a damage to a third party that flows from an ethical violation and they claim some damages, there may be an exception to your insurance that comes into play. So I just want to touch on three areas very quickly. The main one, of course, that you bump across as elected officials is the question of when do I have a conflict of interest? And when do I have to recuse myself? So in very, very broad terms, just to refresh ourselves on the rules, remember that when you as a board member or the board is being asked to make a decision or take some action that affects your own personal financial interest, you're now in a conflict of interest situation. And the four things you need to do are disclose your conflict of interest. Recuse yourself from the discussion and vote on the matter. Don't attempt to influence your fellow trustees on how they might vote on the matter. And then I'll need a little help here, Ian. Do you leave, are you required to leave the boardroom when you have a conflict?
That's correct.
Okay. And then you leave the room, step away. Okay? Make sure you make your disclosure right up front. The mayor calls up that agenda item. The next agenda item is a subdivision request. And if you have the conflict, mayor, I need to make a disclosure. I've got a conflict and then you leave the room. Right? If you do just that, if you just say I have a conflict and leave, everyone who's left in the room after you leave their hairs on fire because they don't know what the conflict is. So make sure you use that opportunity for disclosure to show everyone, right, that you know what your ethical obligations are. You know, when you have a conflict that looks great to drill down and say, I have a conflict of interest. I'm going to recuse myself because I am a part owner of the company that owns the property that's subject to the subdivision request. Now everybody knows, right, what the conflict is and you've shown that you appreciate and understand your ethical obligations. As we get it, sometimes you're going to be subject to accusations, unfounded accusations of conflicts of interest, right? But every time you show that you have a clear understanding of what your ethical obligations are, that'll help you. Okay? So disclose, recuse yourself. Attempt to influence your board members either there in the meeting or outside the meeting before. Don't attempt to influence staff that has a role in preparing the staff report for an item where you may have a conflict. where you may have a conflict of interest, okay? Two other items quickly on ethics. There's also a provision in the Code of Ethics that says, you shall not use or disclose confidential information that you gain as a trustee for your own personal benefit. Be careful of that. And then make sure you follow whatever your gifts rules are, right? Because it's not the huge pay or the elaborate gifts to bring us to public service, and that's true. Ian, do you have a local gift rule, or do you follow Member 41?
We have a local gift rule, Sam.
Okay, yeah, so whatever those rules are, make sure you follow those, whatever the monetary threshold is. My main takeaway on gifts is no matter what the gift is and no matter what it's worth, if it's clear the gift is being offered to you to influence your position as a public official or to reward you as a public official, then simply decline the gift. And you'll be in a much better place. You may on occasion get the request from the developer or some other interested party or someone who wants to buy you lunch or something like that. If a reasonable person looks at that and says, huh, that seems odd. Why are they taking me to lunch now? Then simply decline the lunch. Or using that enormous discretionary account that the town manager has vested you with, pay for your own lunch, right? And you'd be much better off than accepting a gift that could lead to some concern down the road. Yeah, any questions about ethics stuff? There's much more to be covered on that topic, but given the time constraints, I just wanted to hit on those three things about confidential information, conflicts and gifts. All right, suggestion number six for you all is to be cautious in administrative matters. Recognize that the Town of Windsor, under your charter and under your system of government, you have the gold standard, right, in terms of, from where you sit as trustees, you have a council-manager form of government where for most administrative matters, you have a single point of contact, communication and accountability that allows you to focus your energy and efforts on the big picture things and the town manager is accountable to you for handling the administrative details for the organization, right? Recognize and appreciate that distinction. I don't, in my presentations, drill down too much or harp too much on the policy administrative distinction, but do recognize there is that distinction in every municipal organization, no matter how large or how small, right? And in the big picture, it can be, the distinction can be described this way. The board's role within the organization, we're a corporation, right? Who are the owners of our corporation? Citizens, right? And within that broad picture, it's the board's role. The board is the one most uniquely qualified to help determine what's the policy, the vision for this community and how do we put governmental resources on those wants and needs. So the board's role is that bigger picture of establishing policy and vision, setting overall goals and priorities, determining the ends of where they want the community to be. And energy is well spent on the big picture stuff, the comp plan, the five-year plan, the things that only the board as a board can do, but leave the administrative details to your staff. That legislative administrative distinction is particularly important in personnel matters, right? The board does have a role on certain personnel matters, but only on a couple of broad picture items. You might, maybe I'll look the Ian to confirm one way or the other, maybe the board approves the personnel policies, right?
No, the personnel policies are generally reserved to the town manager.
Okay, okay. So the board's role may be limited then to setting the overall personnel budget, right? Setting overall goals and priorities, but recognize clearly there's a distinction between having a budgetary discussion about how many FTEs do we need in this department or that department. That's a whole different story than trying to be involved individually with some hiring or firing decision. And the latter is where you can certainly get yourself into a liability situation. The town board does have a few employees that it supervises directly, but only a very, very limited number. That's the town manager, the town attorney, the judge. And I think that's probably it, prosecutor, right? With regard to supervision of personnel, that's where the board will want to spend its energy, right? And only supervise your direct reports. In that relationship, you do want to spend energy there and make sure you have mutually workable and agreed upon systems to conduct performance evaluations and give feedback and share concerns with your direct reports. But make sure that your involvement in personnel matters does not devolve into getting involved in selection evaluation of disciplinary matters involving persons who are not direct reports of, right? We've seen it in, it's sort of saying, sometimes we know that, you know, the temptation's out there that once, once in a while, there may be some employee who's somewhere else on the chain of command, somewhere further down in a department who may come to you as a trustee and say something like, can I talk to you about my boss? Right? And your answer to that as a board is, we support our employees, we appreciate your service, but we as a board do not get involved in personnel matters at that level. And encourage them to speak with HR or their supervisor because inappropriately bypassing the chain of command, no matter which direction it goes, can lead to some sticky situations. These concepts are actually in your town code. I put that there on the screen. You do have a question in your charter that talks about the board's relationship to the administrative service, right? And it confirms the point that from the board's perspective, your relationship through to the administrative services with the town manager, right? That the board does not give direct orders to town staff, rather to your manager to give you information and to carry out the administrative side of this, right? All that can be done consistent with mutual support within the organizational structure. It can all be done consistent with gaining accountability. But you as board members want to make sure you maintain that appropriate distance from staff. Recognize also the risk that if you do get overly involved in staff matters that are further down the chain of command, recognize that those staff members perceive you, going back to my earlier slide, 24/7, they perceive you as town-elected officials. And they may find stock in something you said that you didn't intend. Or they may believe that you made something, a comment that they thought was indicative of what the board wanted or was somehow a promise to them. So do be mindful of that and maintain appropriate respectful distance to staff. Yeah. I'm sorry, was there a question?
No, there was not, Sam.
I'm sorry.
There was not, Sam.
Okay, wrapping up this suggestion. When you do deal with your staff and your direct reports, commit to speak with one voice as a board, right? Each governing body is made up of seven individuals. Each has its own goal, each member has his own goals and priorities. But recognize that it's tough enough having one boss, it's not a group of seven bosses. So commit yourself to speak with one voice to your direct reports. That's where you get, as a board, from your perspective, that's how your direction is clear, your direction is credible. That's how you gain power and accountability with regard to your direct reports if you speak with that one voice. Your town manager probably feels more comforted sometimes if that's given by a 7-0 or consensus, but sometimes it might be 4-3. But you want to make sure you put in the effort as a town board to speak with that one voice. It's not easy. You'll have some meeting where the mayor will ask the board, hey, let's give Shane some direction. And we go down the dais and first go around, we got seven different directions for Shane. And your town, and the mayor says, Shane, you got your direction? That's the situation incumbent on the board or the betterment of the board to work that issue harder to make sure that it gives that single direction to its staff so that there's accountability and credibility to your direction. You don't want it to devolve into a situation where you kind of leave that disarray lingering. Because where we found that leads is, you know, maybe a couple of days later, somebody stops by the office, one of the trustees, and says, well, that was kind of a muddled discussion the other night, but here's what I want you to do. You can see now that we're fragmenting your power as a board. If we begin peeling off individually and attempting to give individual direction, your manager may be in a position to say, well, you know, you got to find three or four people who want to go that way. And when you do, then you have the powers of the board to say, hey, that's the direction we want you to carry out, no matter what staff view of that direction may be, right? They're accountable to you as well to respect and carry out the policy directives of the board. Suggestion seven, my final suggestion for you all. As a board, commit to a no surprises approach with each other and with your staff, right? Your meetings ought not to be an opportunity for gotcha moments, right? From your perspective as board members, if you read your packet and you're getting ready for the meeting and something doesn't sound right or you have a question, it's always appropriate from your perspective to make that tactful call to the manager or if it's a legal question to the town attorney and say, I was looking at the packet and I had this question. Think if it's a quasi judicial matter, it may not be prepared to give you a full answer, right? But at least you've given him the heads up. There's something that you're thinking about that you might need more information on or that ought to be addressed at the meeting. So that kind of call is always appropriate and can help avoid those moments at the meeting. Use your manager as a resource to help you do well and look good while doing it. Among our membership, we have varying levels of this, but I don't know, you know, if you're a board, a lot of constituent emails at home from your members, but if you do, recognize that if it's a matter that's not a board matter that needs staff support, then you can use your manager to help you resource that and help you look good, right? If it's a question about a public works project, you send that to your manager, who's your point of contact. Manager gets the answer, they get that to the citizen. The manager comes back and tells you, we responded to that citizen. And now you're in a position, next time you interact with that citizen, hey, did we as an organization get you the information that you needed? If so, hey, great. If not, please let us know as an organization where we can improve. As a board, develop and embrace your own agenda. Don't allow your agenda to be driven by having to react to the latest thing that's coming up. Set time aside as a board to embrace and develop your own ways of doing business, your own norms of conduct for what you expect for each other and an agenda and work plan for your results. Finally, recognize that you set the tone for the whole organization in terms of treatment of employees, citizens in the business community. Not always easy. Sometimes you're going to be in a public meeting where people are going to say things that are kind of nasty. But recognize that particularly in the civil rights arena, your liability risk exposure can go up if there's a sense or a taste that you've done something that feels retaliatory or feels overreactive. So be careful in that regard. We know sometimes it doesn't feel all that easy because you may feel like you got a bullseye on your back. But part of the job of being an elected official as well is that particularly during public comment, have to give people their three minutes and just understand that that's their constitutional right to give you the three minutes of comment and just move on from there if it's something particularly distasteful. Nonetheless, they have a right to make those comments. And finally, always keep in mind that you're the stewards of the town's best interests and assets. With that, just a reminder again that you can go to Source's website and find additional resources. If we have some time, I'm certainly happy to take any questions that we have. And thank you all very, very much for your public service for the town. I appreciate it. Thanks for the opportunity to visit with you on Zoom. That this presentation was, sorry, didn't get to see you in person. Next time we're in person, I'll bring a double, double helping of snacks. Usually when we come and visit you from Source, we bring snacks. So when we come next time, we'll have double the snacks. Thank you all very, very much.
Thanks, Sam. We appreciate your time this evening going over all that information with us.
Thank you. We do.
Thanks, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
Any other questions by any town board members before we move on to the next agenda item tonight?
I'm saying no.
Okay. The second item on our agenda tonight is the District Four vacancy discussion. Who's heading that up?
I think Crystal Iker.
Crystal. Crystal.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay. So due to the election and Paul Reimeyer being elected as the mayor, that has left a vacancy for the District Four seat, which has term expiring in April of 2022.
The charter does lay out three scenarios to fill that vacancy. The first one, if there is less than a year until the next regular municipal election, they can leave that seat vacant, which, since there is more than a year, that eliminates that option. And the second option is to call a special election. And due to different, you know, with the primary election and the regular election in November, the soonest we could hold a special election would be on August 4th. And that would put the nomination petition period for that election between May 5th and May 25th. And then the third option is to do an appointment process for that seat. You know, in the memo, we have begun publicizing that vacancy on May 11th. Having any interested parties submit their letter of interest in application by May 26th. And then we can finalize the process on how to appointment by June 1st. Complete applicant interviews in lieu of the work session on June 15th. We could have somebody appointed to that seat on June 22nd. So those are the three options. And if you have any questions, we can answer those for you.
Does anybody have any thoughts about that other than going through the appointment process by requesting applications from the public from within District Four?
This is Barry Wilson with District Two. I mean, that's what I've seen done in the past. And I didn't know we had other options. I had assumed that's the route that we would go. And I'd probably.
I'm sorry, Dave.
Never mind.
Go ahead, Barry. Go ahead and finish what you were saying.
No, and I'd probably, you know, just on my initial thoughts and, you know, I could be swayed, but I think I'd prefer that route over doing a special election and pushing it out so far.
Mr. Sizalovsky, did you have a question?
No, you know, similar to just comment, discussion of what we're talking about. And I agree, I kind of with Barry, I had assumed that it would be an appointment via vacancy. And I certainly also assumed that would be the process. The difference, you know, if you look at it, if we had a special election, that would be filled on August 4th as opposed to June 22nd. So there's six weeks maybe different between that, between those two, which isn't as long as I would have thought. There is a cost, obviously, to holding a special election. You know, there was a lot of sensitivity, I think, in the media and locally because of the stepping down of the commissioner and all this discussion about, well, if so-and-so goes for that commissioner's seat, then that'll open a state representative seat, but then that may in turn open a senate seat. And there was sort of a negative, I think, feeling about these representatives who are not elected officials becoming elected officials simply by appointment. I don't feel that strongly about it, but I think there was some public discussion about it.
Well, if we go through the public appointment process, we're basically going to seat somebody two months early earlier and at a lower cost than if we have a special election. So, because if the election would be the first Tuesday in August is what I'm assuming Ms. Iker had said, then that seat probably wouldn't be sworn in until the 4th Monday or the second board meeting in August.
Yeah, yeah, probably two weeks. I mean, two months.
Which would be roughly two months after June 22nd, which looks like it's when the appointment would be scheduled for swearing in if we go the appointment route.
Mr. Bennett, you have commenter question?
Mr. Bennett, you have commenter question?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I prefer the appointment process and I'm not a big fan of six people picking somebody, but given the timing and given the challenges that we have facing our community here in the next few months, uh, I'd rather get somebody, uh, in that seat sooner rather than later.
Mr. Tallon, you have commenter question?
Yes, I was thinking, uh, on the same lines. I, I think that I would concur with the rest of the, uh, board members and, and go with your point.
Mr. Carpenter, do you have a, a comment?
No, I'm still absorbing all of this. Couldn't figure out, turn that off.
All right. That's, uh, that's the whole board then there that's spoken in. So, uh, so staff just needs direction on what we'd like to do.
Uh, well, it sounds like we have pretty much unanimous consent amongst the six of us to go the appointment route. Which, uh, Ms. Iker, I guess that's the, the direction we'll move in.
We'll get that process started. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item number three on tonight's agenda is business grant loan discussion is, uh, Ms. Miller. Leading the discussion on that.
She is there. There she is.
Hey, there she is.
I'm mute, please.
You're still muted. I'm sorry. Can't hear anything, Stacy. There we go.
Go. Can you hear me now? Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Board Members. So, um, Shane and I have had lots of discussions and lots of different meetings about the efforts and things that are going on in Windsor. Um, and all over really Larimer, Weld, the state, multiple states and conversations with the COVID crisis. So what we thought we would do here tonight was to bring you some information based off of what I'm seeing mark our surrounding communities and kind of what's going on. Who's doing loans? Who's doing grants? What those purposes are to help our businesses? You know, or in the region, what they're doing to help their businesses. So you should have received in your packet, a spreadsheet that I kind of put together about 16 different surrounding communities and, and organizations and what they're doing. This is as much up to date information that I still have at this time. So you, you've received the most accurate information that I have. And as you can tell by the memo that I, that I sent out with this, most of the programs, whether they are a loan or whether they are a grant are designated to go to specific items. So most of them are obviously for payroll, rent, utilities. Uh, some are for operating costs or working capital, um, within those. And all of the loans vary. And they're, they're, uh, they all vary from whether they're short-term loans, low interest, long-term loans, potential grants to be repaid. All of those different amounts, they vary. Item or line or column F was basically just some of the basic requirements. There is so much information on all of each individual loan and background. And if anybody needs more information, I can send it at that, at that point, but or at that time. But what we thought we would do is kind of just give you a jumping off point and start the conversation to see what the board was interested in. And have a discussion about that. As you can tell, um, from the last business survey that went out, the majority of businesses. Wow. Sorry about that. My associate's a little rowdy.
My associate.
I know.
That was Jill?
Yeah, exactly. Jill, sit her down. Sit her down. So yeah, I always joke that she's protecting me from the COVID or something going on out there. But, um, so, uh, as you can tell from the last business survey, the majority of people were in need of some money and they were looking for that in the form of a grant. We just sent out today the second round of survey that has about another 25 to 35 questions in it, depending on if they choose to answer additional questions through the survey. So round two survey, we're hoping to have those results back to you by the end of this week or early next week. And those should give us an idea of who got the PPP loans, who got the idle loans, what kind of information they're still looking for. And basically that kind of basic information, you know, how many employees have you had to lay off? What kind of, you know, the basic kind of information that we sent out on that first day, right, should come back. And we did that, um, this business retention expansion group did that on purpose to send it out 30 days after. And then we're going to send it out again in another 30 days, just to see the status of how businesses are doing in Larimer and Weld County. So with that, I, I would open it up if anybody has any questions or comments. I can go into more detail about the specific groups that we've been meeting with. The restaurant groups, the salon groups, the massage therapists, the chiropractors. Um, we've put together a recovery team that we're meeting. And so we've been really trying to get our ear to the ground and, and it, it's just hit or miss on specific industry about what people are looking for. I don't know, Shane, if you had anything you wanted to add or if anybody had any questions about the information.
I don't, uh, I just wanted to listen to the board's questions and, and see, uh, you know, where they were.
Mr. Sislawski, you have a question or comment?
Yeah. Hi, thanks. Yeah, I'm looking through this list. Thanks for piecing all this together. It's really, really helpful. Appreciate it. Was probably chasing around quite a bit to get this, even this level of detail. It looks like most of these are in the form of grants. There's a couple of loans. I'm, I'm surprised in a way Larimer County looks like a rather large, up to $5 million pool of money to do in loans. When you look at that, and obviously there's some underwriting standards with each of these loans, there's also going to be some format uh, of collecting and payment. I hesitate to view the town as being playing the role of a bank or of a lender. Uh, you referenced somewhere here that, uh, early on, Fort Collins was having its loan, if you will, managed by Colorado Lending Source. So I'm guessing they hired a third party that said, uh, here, here's the money we're willing to loan, but you run the underwriting. You run the application criteria process. Do you know if Larimer County is doing that same or are they doing it in-house on this $5 million package?
Yeah. So there's two different funds under, the Fort Collins had a pool of money that they reallocated from a different source that, um, Colorado Lending Source was already managing. So Colorado, they just switched the purpose of the funds. It was their cluster grant funds. And so they switched it over to, um, Colorado lending or maintained it with Colorado Lending Source, and that's closed. So all that money's gone that they had. That was about, um, I believe their total, they told me is about $110,000 that they had in that fund, $120,000. And then the second fund, they took the rest of that money that they had that was originally allocated for that, their 210 to 220,000, and they put it into the regional Larimer County Fund. They then hired Colorado Enterprise Fund to manage that program along with like, you'll see some of these Bertha had put money in or, or still considering putting money in to the Larimer County Fund. Wellington is still considering putting a pot of money into the Larimer County Fund. So it's almost like this regional fund that everybody's putting in, but they've managed it through Colorado Enterprise Fund. Colorado Enterprise Fund charges 3% service fees to manage all of these loan funds. That is currently being backed up by the Bohemian Foundation. So the Bohemian Foundation is paying for all the service fees to manage that loan. And the money that, that each community is putting in is used as a loan loss reserve. So they're putting the money in and they've got to come up with $200,000 for the first round of 2 million. And they've got to come up with $300,000 for the second round of funding of 3 million to come up to the total fund value of 5 million that they're looking to put together for Larimer County businesses. Now with that being said, um, there is nothing stating that Windsor businesses, Larimer County Windsor businesses would not be eligible to apply for loans with that program, whether we put money into it or not. So meaning our businesses could still take advantage of that program, even if Windsor did not put any money into the, the loan loss reserve fund. However, there is going to be a precedent set where in the each MOU or agreement with Colorado Enterprise Fund, they are trying to place loans specifically in those communities that do actually put money towards that loan loss reserve. The other caveat is that if we put money in there, we have a likelihood of getting that money back out in probably three to five years. However, it's whatever percentage of loss was hit on the entire fund. So say there was a 10% hit on funds not being repaid all throughout Larimer County and we put in $10,000 or $20,000, then we would subtract the 10% and we would get that amount back at the end of, of the three to five years. So it's an equal distribution of loan loss. It doesn't go by just the community that it's in and that's how much you lose. So that's one option. Upstate Colorado is also switching over their revolving loan fund. That used to be the Larimer Weld Revolving Loan Fund. I don't believe we've identified or they have identified the specific amount of money that is going into that fund, but they plan on mirroring Larimer County's fund so that it makes it equally easy to manage or to access funds from both, um, different organizations. So from that standpoint, there's, um, there's opportunity in both Larimer County businesses and Weld County businesses. And I've already had one person interested in the Weld County. It's just those regulations are not released yet. Cause, cause the Larimer Weld Revolving Loan Fund Board has to be shifted over to a new kind of board to go through those products as well. And I know that's a really lengthy answer. Sorry, but hopefully I answered your question on that.
No, that, that was excellent. I mean, it's, it's a lot more information than we can glean just from this spreadsheet. So suffice it to say, obviously managing, managing through a loan fund is, is a bit complicated, will take administrative overhead and you're either going to try to provide it yourself or you're going to pay somebody 3%. I'm guessing that the Bohemian Fund may not underwrite the 3% for anything other than Larimer County.
Correct.
Right?
Correct. That's, that's understanding.
Thank you. Nope, sorry, Stacy. I wasn't trying to cut you off. Did you have anything else to add, Stacy?
No, thank you. No.
Ken, did you have a comment or question for us?
Uh, yeah, quite a bit. This is going to take a lot of thought. There's a lot of details to really think through on this. You know, we use our economic development fund as incentives for new businesses. So I could certainly support in this time of need, uh, using some of that money for existing businesses. Uh, I'm anxious to hear what the perspective is of our local businesses about what would really help them in short-term and long-term. So I'm anxious to see the results of those surveys. I guess in general, I kind of like the approach of Upstate Colorado, Larimer County, that we would participate in that because as Mr. Sislawski said, we're not really bankers. And for us to get into that is going to be a whole administrative system that we may not be set up to handle by ourselves. So a couple of other things, just in general, I, I would support loans over grants. Uh, looking through some of the criteria that Greeley and Bertha had, I think there's some merit in those. I'd make some adjustments. But again, I'd like to come back and see what really is going to make a difference three, six months down the road. And I would include in that from the business perspective, that they feel that there's things we could do to help them with advertising and marketing for a longer term return recovery.
The, the reason that I, I, I want to let everybody know, I'm sorry, what? Oh, Mr. Sislawski, go ahead. Then I'll give my comment.
Actually, uh, Mr. Mayor, happy to hear. I'm interested. One other, a comment though, and we have to understand, I'm pretty sure the way this works from what Stacy just described. If somehow there could be a coordinated effort between Larimer and Weld, perhaps through Upstate Colorado, where you felt that there was an infrastructure in place to oversee and manage all this. There, there is still the loan loss, uh, pooling of loan losses. Certainly it could happen that none of the Windsor businesses fail, but a number of pick, uh, Wellington businesses fail and the taxpayers of Windsor end up subsidizing that loss in all the other communities. That's just the nature of pooling, pooling the risk. And, and I don't have a, I don't have a philosophical problem with it, but in fact, that's what could happen is we will, we could lose some money, uh, based on failing businesses, even though they're not located in Windsor. Just that comment.
What I was, uh,
a couple of seconds ago is that, uh, I had asked Stacy about a week ago if there were, you know, what, what, what all those surrounding communities of which obviously we have quite a list here, what they were doing, because obviously we're hearing a lot, uh, as other municipalities over the last month or so have already started to disclose what their, their boards or councils had, uh, agreed upon as far as what, you know, assistance that they were going to offer, whether that was going to be loans or grants, um, participation, you know, through their local DDA like Loveland is doing. In, in Greeley, they're using the Chamber of Commerce to distribute funds uh, that have gone into a fund where the city of Greeley has added money into that, uh, fund. And so I, I, I was the one that had asked that this could put on so that we could at least have the discussion as to, you know, at, at the infancy, I guess, as to, do we feel like we've done enough? Do we want to, uh, go down the path of having staff, whether that's Stacy, Shane, you know, Dean with the finances and finance, the finance department, et cetera? Did we want to go down the path of, you know, whether or not we're going to, you know, explore the option of, uh, grants or loans? Uh, or do we not want to do anything at all? Or do we want to use alternative methods to, you know, help businesses advertise in Windsor? I mean, obviously Stacy and Jill, you know, already do a lot to support the businesses in Windsor, but you know, a lot of them have, uh, you know, want to get the word out, you know, that they're, uh, looking to, you know, that they have specials or when they're looking to reopen. Uh, you know, be able to get the message out on what, you know, safety precautions they're taking, et cetera. So there's, there's a whole gamut of things that we could do to help support the local businesses of Windsor. And I just, you know, being a, a, a local business guy myself would like, you know, the, the town board to have checkmarked this box, whether that's, you know, go down the path of loans or grants, uh, you know, because I, the last thing that I would want is, is, you know, whatever we may decide to do if it is to, you know, establish a, a grant or a loan policy that, you know, it's a month from now or more before checks of, you know, a loan or a grant are being handed out. The businesses are, you know, concerned going, I really needed that four to six weeks ago. And so that's why I at least wanted to start the conversation on this with the board uh, to see what your, uh, direction would be. And, you know, we, we have it down and I'm, I'm getting ahead of it on our, on our future meetings agenda. Originally the conversation was going to come up, uh, next Monday and I wanted to move it up by a week so that if we uh, wanted staff to put together, uh, some numbers, some thoughts, et cetera, for us based upon our direction tonight to them, that we could follow back up with it, uh, again next Monday night.
Can you have a comment or question?
Uh, yeah, there's a question. The, uh, Jill, Shane, uh, the surveys that you have done and are doing, what are, what's the nature of the type of questions you're asking?
Okay. So the next, um, the next survey that just went out, basic information about business first name, contact information. Where's the business's location? What industry sector does that serve? Estimated total number of employees as of March 1st. Did your business close due to COVID-19 emergency? What percentage of your total employees of March 1st were full-time? Do you believe we'll be able to reopen your business in 2020? Why aren't you expecting to reopen your business in 2020? Which choice includes your business 2019 total revenue? How do you expect the COVID-19 emergency to impact your revenues relative to April 1st through June 30th? Of, I'm guessing that's supposed to be 2020, second quarter. Which one of these milestones do you believe are important to help your business reach its previous level? There's a selection there. Safety compliance. Are you willing to answer three or four questions about your business's ability to operate safely? So then if it does, then it goes into a bunch of safety questions about, you know, what support do you need to remain open? What kind of training or, you know, to attend or require, encourage your employees to participate regarding remaining safer in the workplace? Employment changes. Are you willing to answer three to five multiple choice questions about employment? So those questions go into which employment changes have you made at your business? What is the appropriate percentage of employees that have been laid off? Are you planning to bring back laid off employees? Are you planning to bring back laid off employees? What is the percentage of your total payroll? There's more questions on that. I can send all this to you guys, so I don't have to sit here and read it. And then it says financial assistance. Are you willing to answer three to seven multiple choice questions about your business's need and ability to access financial assistance during the COVID-19 emergency? So do you have unemployment insurance as a sole proprietor or self-employed? Do you attempt to apply for any of the SBA funding made available under the CARES Act? Um, and idle loan, did you have a loan? Was it successful? How much did you request? How much did you receive? Idle grant information, same thing about those PPP, was your application successful? Um, did you receive that? And then it said, what is your best estimate of current unmet financial need to keep your business going through June 30th of 2020? That you would pursue through loans, grants or other financial tools? Based on your estimate, how much business costs and revenues may look under safer at home rules guidance? What is your current anticipated financial need through loans, grants or external tools? So we've kind of gone on with, and then there's adaptation to community support. What can we do for that? And there's several questions that go into that. I'll send you all of those questions. It's there, it's, I kind of had to take them from a spreadsheet, so they're not the actual survey. I'm, and if I send you the survey, you have to fill it out. So I can send that to you, but those are the basic questions that we've asked that have to do with employment, financial needs. Have you closed? What loans have you applied for in the past? What are you looking for? And I'm not sure if that answers your, your question completely.
Stacy, it does. I think that would be really valuable information. I appreciate you detailed on that, thrown this of it. Um, I know we've had several businesses make comments to uh maybe some of us individually about what they would like to see the town do. Have you, and we had a letter initially uh from some downtown businesses with some ideas. Have you heard any recent comments from a business or a, a committee of business people? Uh, suggestions about what they would like to see the town do to help them?
So I have actually, so some of the categories um that we've been having meetings in most recently have to do with the restaurant industry. Uh, we know that they are severely impacted industries in our community as well as uh one of the largest hits to our um sales tax revenue for the town. So we've been ongoing, having ongoing meetings with the restaurant industry. Some of those folks have said that they need advocacy from us. And basically they need an extension of the PPP so that they can spread that out longer than eight weeks because they're having difficulty with their employees wanting to come back to work just because their unemployment benefits are so high that they're making more money by staying at home. So that was, yeah, one of the comments. The second comment was really it wouldn't be effective if Governor Polis only allowed the restaurants to open up at 50% capacity that they really needed to open up at more like 75% before they could break even. The third thing that they mentioned is basically trying to find some more outdoor seating if they were only allowed to open up at 50% capacity. So how could they spread out their available square footage to basically bring in more revenue? Then that would make it worth it for them to have more employees come in and to pay them and, and to be able to pay their overhead for operating. Um, there was some comments by a specific individual who suggested that maybe we forgive their sales tax deferment. However, I, I don't necessarily recommend that, just simply because that's not fair to put it up and set it up the program the way that you guys approved it and then to go back and just say, oh, well, now we're going to forgive that. But that's just my opinion. I just, I don't think it's fair because then more people wouldn't have had the opportunity to apply or they would have applied knowing that eventually it could be forgiven. So that was a suggestion that might be a little bit complicated to accomplish um from that particular provider. Now, last week we did, um, Jill and I reached out to all of our salons because we knew that they would be opening up as of last Friday. Uh, the question that we basically sent out in a direct email, it was not a survey. We basically just said, how are you doing? Are you aware of your compliance regulations and requirements? Is there anything we can do to help you secure PPE, um, personal protection equipment? Or do you, you know, are you having financial hardship to actually acquire the equipment to get up and running? And nobody got back to us. They were having financial difficulty to acquire that, but they did ask for location of where they could get some personal protection equipment. So I've been successful as well as Jill in sending about four, four different companies on our salons, tanning salons and um, and uh cause like eyelash places too, so that are that. I've, I um actually have sent four of them to Hi-Hops. And then through a connection on LinkedIn, I found a gal who sells, sells like those little sanitation Purell sanitation wipes. So um, I got them connected with that. So basically we're just disseminating information to those businesses. We have not heard um of any specific requirements financially from them, but we didn't say, you know, hey, if we're going to put a grant together and give you money, would you take it? Cause I, I think the answer would be yes, for probably for any business. Those are the recent ones that we've heard um from and that I've really been heavily involved with. We're trying to touch base. Jill has been calling and I'm sorry, she's not feeling well. She's not on the call tonight, but um they uh, you know, she's been calling our primary employers as well. And I know she was successful in helping some of those folks with some, some items um a few weeks ago and just seeing what they've, they've needed. But that's, it's kind of a mixed bag. I haven't really been getting calls. Most of them have been, do you have guidance for what we need to do? So not to keep being long-winded, but so I'm on two different committees in Fort Collins for preparation for the restaurant guidelines and then retail guidelines, trying to help come up with um items that we can help for Larimer County and trying to be proactive about when those retailers open, how can we be effective? And help those companies and give them guidance and interpret, and try to help interpret the state requirements and, and just point them to the state guidelines and send them those links and information so that they can find that information themselves when they need it. Uh, we also, in last week's update, you may see we, I sent out a link within the economic development update that is for American Express. It has a really cool link, it's free for any business. You don't have to accept American Express, but it's a small business toolkit that you can plug in. It's limited on the colors and the scope of what you can do, but you can really plug in your company, your information and get letterhead, you can get documents, you can get collateral material, you can get marketing materials. So really kind of helping all of those businesses that may not have anybody to help them advertise their hours of operation and their, their businesses to that regard. The other thing that I think we're discussing and talking about, I think um uh Mr. Mayor talked about it earlier, um, was that the website and the marketing tools as we move forward, I think we're going to partner with, you know, continue to partner with the SBDC and the library to get these small businesses. Social media is going to be huge for these businesses to get the word out. And people, you know, that's, that's half the battle is getting the word out to the consumers. The other half, I think the battles that we're going to have and we need to find a way to work through this is how do we encourage and, and increase consumer confidence? Just because these businesses are, doesn't mean people feel safe to go out into them. So how do we, how do we help that? You need to make sure that we can get people out shopping and spending money um with all of our small businesses.
Stacy, this is kind of your, your comments and the comments you're picking up kind of confirm some of my concerns, but also some of my hopes. Um, I've thought about, you know, I'm sure business could use a, a X amount of dollars to pay their rent or whatever, but that's a short-term uh, uh Band-Aid when they really need something more. I've been concerned about our restaurants. Uh, most of our are probably pretty thin margin of profit. And with um only half open or 50% of your customers, and I've been concerned about how many of them will actually have enough employees who are willing and able to come back to work. Cause I know I've heard many people are making more on unemployment. So employer may have difficulty even getting their employees back. And as far as getting customers, I think it's going to be a while before customers feel really uh, uh significant numbers of customers feel safe and confident in coming to indoor sit-down. So I've been on my own thing about ideas like the PPEs, uh, I hadn't talked about outdoor setting, uh, but some ways that would really help us long-term. From what I understand, this virus is not going away this week. It's not going away in the next few, two months. They're even saying it might be with us for a couple of years. There's questions about whether we even have vaccine. So as we think about how to help our businesses, our local economy, you know, immediate help maybe, but I, I really want to try to focus on what's going to help us six months and a year down the road.
Yeah, I think that's a valid point. Um, I did sit in on the Colorado Restaurant Association webinar today and they had restaurants from across the state. They gave their input about ideas and programs that they're doing. I'd be glad to share that information with you if anybody's interested. I kind of took some notes and, and just some basic ideas about what other restaurants are doing. And I'll just give you kind of a summary, the, the overall concern was number one, do they have enough space if they're only required at 50% capacity? And the second request or um suggestion um was to really get an online presence in social media. And there's an app called like an Olo app, which apparently is a, it's like a on-demand app that you can download and you can order your food through it. You can do everything on it, take payment through that so that the staff isn't worried about touching credit cards or cash. And so, um, but really, really pushing social media, that was the big, kind of one of the big concerns as well as, you know, how can they extend the PPP? And to your point, um, Town Board Member Bennett, there was concern about getting employees back to work. And they had a gentleman on the phone that was the, the lawyer for the Colorado Association. And he said that if you can actually, if you, in writing, if you offer your job, the job back to the employee in writing and they turn it down, you can still technically count that as a full-time um employee. So your money, that money, um, you don't have to repay just because the person won't come back to, to work. So, but that doesn't really help the restaurant if the person won't come back to work to serve the people either. So I think that's going to be an issue for a little while and I hope that it doesn't drag on. I think, I think the payment for that or the unemployment is, goes through July, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, June or July for that extra 600 bucks a week and the unemployment. So I hope that that doesn't um really affect our businesses as well, but I'm afraid it will.
Stacy, I want to interject here.
Actually, a news uh notification while you were speaking that the governor this afternoon in his afternoon press conference said that where he hoped that restaurants could reopen by mid-May, he now says it may not be until June at some point before restaurants are able to reopen. So um anyhow, Mr. Slosky, did you have a comment or question?
Um, yeah, um, Mr. Mayor, I, I think following up to your, I think what you're really asking is some sense of direction on this board, whether we want to do anything at all and if so, what it would look like. Uh, I think what thi- this graph of course tells us what a lot of people are doing in terms of making funds available in some fashion. But if we take a step back and I guess I'd be curious what the other board members feel about doing anything at all. And if we're going to, then it feels appropriate place would be in our economic development. Uh, Stacy has a budget, I think of 200,000 a year for incentives. Uh, I can absolutely understand an argument to say that those incentives are to attract new businesses, but to also support existing businesses who are looking to expand or are considering perhaps relocating. So I think the rationale is there to use all or some portion of these funds to support small businesses in some way. At the same time, I could jump on the other side and say, as soon as we're doing that, in some fashion, the town is going to be picking winners and losers. It's going to be acting like a bank. It's not an appropriate role. Uh, and every time you worry about what the businesses are like, why are not residents who are now currently unemployed saying, what about me? Uh, I'm, I'm in even worse shape than they are. And, uh, and yet we're spending their tax dollars to support the businesses. So um, I, I struggle. I, I'm struggling on both sides of this. Uh, I probably am leaning toward making some funds available in some fashion, but I'd like to hear what the other board members think about doing that. And then we can figure out how, based on this menu of options, I guess. And I would certainly look to staff to make recommendations. Uh, once we say, okay, let's make this bucket of money available. What, what, what would you recommend or how should we do it? So um, Mr. Wilson, you got, okay, you got your hand up. Good.
No, no, Mr. Slosky, I, I think you hit it on the head. I, I shared a lot of those same concerns about picking winners and losers and, you know, we're, we're maybe helping business owners, but not their employees. For example, who could be hurting just as bad or worse. And the, a couple of things, you know, and um, you know, I, when I initially looked at the spreadsheet, I thought you did a great job, Stacy. And um, did just pulling all that information together, then I look at some of the municipalities that are a lot bigger than us and how much money they put up and, and how much can we really come up with and how many people could we help? And then the, the other concern is just the risk factor, you know? Um, you know, i- if we are picking who gets the money, you know, there are some businesses that maybe if somebody was teetering before this happened and, and we give them a loan. Um, I do agree with Mr. Bennett as well. Um, I do prefer loans over grants, but um, you know, there's a risk factor that, you know, we might not get some of that back. So that's all I have for now.
Mr. Carpenter, would you like to weigh in?
I'm still thinking about the loan versus the grants. I, I agree with the others that if we do it as a loan, we've got administration issues there and how we get that back. Who's going to, who's going to monitor that and collect that? And um, the grants, how do we pick who gets what? And how do we prevent anyone that gets it unnecessarily? You know, that's, it's a tough one too.
Mayor, if I can jump in again, uh, Scott and, and Vic actually, going back fundamentally, the question is, do we make funds available in any fashion? Do we tap into the economic development budget or, or draw money out of the general fund budget or somewhere else to put a program together? And we can think about whether it's a loan or grant or the details. But I think the first question is, are we prepared to use taxpayer dollars to support businesses in some fashion? And uh, so that's the, I think the first question we got to answer.
And Mr. Slosky, I would tell, I, I would, I would add on to that, that um, I believe Mrs. Miller's economic development budget's uh 250,000. But then again, if that's the fund that we're talking about using, uh, we would probably still want to keep some funds in that, you know, in the event that there is a uh, economic incentive, you know, package that the board is asked to consider uh later this year. So we may not want to utilize any or all that might be available today, uh, considering we still have eight months left of the year. So
And Mayor, I, if I can, uh, so this year the board added um some money to that fund because you wanted to cover everything that was kind of promised in previous years. And so instead of just having the $200,000, I think it was more of the 350,000 this year. Um, Stacy has run the numbers and basically based on the, the, the loans that have already been promised uh for the program. We believe that we've got about 189,000 right now that's unencumbered. So out of that 350, we believe that, that um, for example, like Bobcat of the Rockies is coming in, Inter Sand. Uh, we think that those are going to come in this year, probably sooner than later. Uh, we've already uh paid Dakota Hotel Group really early this year, uh, which was a big one that we had accounted for. So we think we have 189,000 that's unencumbered right now. So it's not
Was that with rollover from last year?
Yes, sir.
Uh, who have we not heard from yet? Mr. Talon? Vic, you're meaning unmute, I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Well, maybe, maybe not. Uh, no, anyway, I think that we need to somehow, uh, and I don't know, you know, the, the budget right now, I haven't had full time to go through and look at it all, but I think somehow we've got to help our businesses uh in some way. You know, and how we're going to handle it, maybe through Stacy and Jill and Dean and, and running it that way. Um, I think loans would be a hard, hard thing to, to handle and who's going to get them. Same with grants, so, but I do think that we need to give them some help. Uh, at least get them through a couple of months, you know, three months, you know, and, and hopefully we get into a level that we're operating at some kind of uh basis that they can, they can survive on their own. But uh, I think that's probably where we got to have to go. And just how we're going to get there, that's going to be up to everybody to sit down and figure this thing out. That's my, my two cents.
Mr. Bennett, did you have a couple of thoughts to add?
Yeah, going back to that quote I gave back on President's Day from uh President Teddy Roosevelt. Said in any situation, you can do the right thing, you can do the wrong thing, worst thing is to do nothing. So uh, not to be too corny about that, but um, I think we should do something. Uh, I, I really have hesitation about uh the grants. My preference would be if we could coordinate with upstate Colorado and with Larimer County because they have a structure to, to help us with that. And again, I want to emphasize, uh, it's already been two months for some of these businesses. Whatever we might give them now might be too little, too late. So I think we really need to emphasize some, what is going to help them going forward. the next six months or year.
Mr. Wilson, did you have something else?
Yeah, yeah, just a little thing. Mr. Bennett, you mentioned kind of helping folks market and promote, and, and I think that's a, that's thought as well. And the reason that resonated with me is I'm an independent agent and I work, you know, I'm contracted with another company, a bigger company. And they came out during this and said, okay, they'll match, like, like if I run Facebook ads, they'll match 50% of it. I did a print ad and they're gonna, I can get reimbursed 70% of that. So I have some skin in the game, but I'm getting out there and doing more marketing and promotion. And I'm getting assistance through that and I find it very helpful as a business owner through the town. And I know Stacy, we already do some of this. I've seen some things for local businesses and things that you've done already. But we have a tremendous communication. So many people follow, especially Facebook and, and some of the other tools that are out there. So I, I think as we look, you know, we, we also want to throw money at the problem and sometimes they have to. But, but at the same time, I think we can be creative and, and help get the word out there. You know, every time, every Monday night when you drive by the wing shack, I mean, there's cars lined up because they have a promotion going on every Monday night. And, you know, we could help, you know, you know, I, I just use that because I drive by it every Monday after this meeting. But, but we, we could help other businesses in, in that fashion as well. And, and some of those solutions might not take a lot of money.
Mr. Bennett, did you have another comment?
Uh, sorry, I do not.
Do any other town board members have a question or comment? Mr. Sizowski, we'll come back to you.
Yeah, I can't, I can't let Ken be the last. I see his hands back up now. He said no. Yeah, I guess, you know, Mayor, what I'm hearing is that there probably is a majority at least who feel like we need to do something. So I, I feel like as long as people are feeling and understanding that, you know, we're using taxpayer dollars to support businesses in some way, fine, then I would actually go back to Stacy and Shane and suggest to them, ask that they come up with a thought about how much money we would make available, where we would get that money in terms of, you know, somewhere in our budget. And then I guess it sounds like there's also, I'm not sure we're decided as to whether it's loans or grants. So again, if they would come back with a recommendation as to the structure. My fear of just jumping in with Laramie and Weld, either through this Laramie County program, that's backed by Colorado Enterprise Fund. And if Weld kind of joins that, it's harder, it's harder than to be a small part of, of a larger pool. But that still may be the best solution with the administrative support of, of someone who's in the business of making loans. So again, I think it feels like we're all agreeing we're going to do something. And I think maybe we allow Stacy and Shane to come back with a proposal.
My, I wanted to add here that the reason that I asked to have this on our agenda this evening is so that we would start the conversation, not that we would come to any conclusions tonight, but that we would begin the process of, of discussing whether or not we wanted to do grants or loans or anything at all, or anything more than what we already have done. Obviously, we had a limited amount of takers that got in on the, the sales tax deferment program. And my, my heart is, and I'll tell you for the last month since I won the election, I've had quite a few business owners that have reached out to me that have said that for the town to do something is better than nothing at all. We may not end up having the funds to be able to grant or loan like some of our other surrounding communities have been able to do. But I always come back to what would the taxpayers of Windsor want their taxes spent on? And I have to say that I, I would come back to, which I think we all are in agreement on this, that they would want us to do something to help businesses. It may not end up being a lot, but right now I don't know that any business would necessarily turn down a, a grant or a loan that is made, you know, obviously loans come with a different agreement to them versus grants. So should we move down the grant aisle or, or option, I don't know that we would have a business that would say that they wouldn't be interested in, in having the town, you know, support them in some even what might be deemed as a minor fashion. So with that, I think we have at least unanimous consent to at least have staff look into this over the next week and then maybe can come back to us with some protocols or options similar to what we saw on the graphs tonight as far as what, what the possibilities might be. And then maybe we can refine those next Monday. Does that sound formidable to everybody, my other town board members that are on the, the call? Mr. Carpenter, did you have another comment? Do you like that?
Yes, Mayor, just a little clarification maybe. So I, I don't know if we have the power to do it or not, but instead of paying something out, are we able to forgive something? Like payroll taxes or something that the employers are paying out every month? I can't do property taxes because there's 700 some businesses that we're trying to deal with, right? And is there something else that we can, can we do a marketing campaign, a commercial that lists the buildings that are open? And something that's more out there? It's a, I, I don't know how you can give anybody enough money to make it worthwhile.
Right. So, so Mr. Carpenter, this is Shane Hale. So we don't collect the payroll tax, the town doesn't. Really, the only lever we would collect every month is the sales tax. And the latest numbers I have is we have 484 sales tax licensed businesses in the town itself. So that doesn't include anybody who collects sales tax on our behalf from an out-of-town or out-of-state vendor, but, but the folks in the town of Windsor, there's 484 of those. We, we also have another 590 businesses that don't collect sales tax. We have, we're talking of a total of 1,074 businesses. So you are right that we don't have a lot of capacity. You know, I just did some simple math and divided the 189,000 that we have unencumbered in the economic development loan fund by 1,074, and that's roughly 176 dollars per business. If you, right? And then if you take that same division just by the sales tax, it's 390 dollars per business. So, you know, if, if we did a grant program, it would either be just getting in line really quick and run for it because it's going to be, you know, we'll, we'll run out of capacity, or it's going to be such small values. It's just like, I, I think that's, so, so we could do some sales tax forgiveness that that would address less than 50% of our businesses. And then the, the other concern there is that that's our primary revenue with the town. And so as we're doing that, you know, we've got it kind of going out the backhand and, and we're not necessarily covering our responsibilities either. So, you know, we probably want to set some kind of max limit there. So, so we understood what our liability was.
Stacy, you had a comment? Thank you, Jess. So kind of back to Town Board Member Bennett's comments about he wants to see what's going on in the future too, because we don't know what that's going to look like from six months from now. There's options here to kind of leverage a little bit of money now, maybe with some of the other loan programs that leverage a larger pool of money that we have a chance to get that money back in three to five years, if not sooner, if those loans get repaid. So there's an option to do, to participate in those programs if that's something that the board chooses to do, get that money back in the future or a certain percentage of it, whatever's not lost. And then, you know, from what I'm hearing, the marketing is going to be a huge thing for businesses for the online social marketing. So maybe there's a pool of money that you could put together to go towards somebody to help them create their social media pages and/or show them and train them how to keep them updated or, you know, you, you pay a marketer a certain amount of money to actually manage those pages for people. So they would say, hey, we have a special on Tuesday and it's going to be XYZ for this business. And then that person could help them post it and, and get it out on social media and/or their websites. That, the websites might be a bigger deal because those cost a lot of money to build and maintain, but at least from what we're hearing is that social media from specifically the restaurant industry, and I'm guessing the retail industry is going to be the hugest, largest area that people need assistance with and that they need that constant messaging to go out to the public. So and then there's just options later down the road if you wanted to do a grant program or you wanted to do something different, you know. There's just, I don't want to say this has to be our one and done option of, of trying to assist companies either. I think there is some, some room to, to do multiple things if we kind of leverage our dollars a little bit. We, we don't have a lot of, a lot of excess money like some of our surrounding communities. Like I think Shane mentioned, so.
And Stacy, I would say that I would completely support us using social media platforms to whatever extent that we can. You know, and I don't know if, you know, what, what methods or methodology we've already utilized. You know, or, and I, I know this is a group discussion. We're all on the same team here. So I'm, I'm just trying to throw out there, you know, I think all options need to be out on the table. I know Mr. Bennett had mentioned that as well. So I, I think that the, the conversation on that, you know, needs to continue because like I said, I get, I'm on email lists from like the Tavern and some others that are all, you know, they have specials coming up or, you know, for Mother's Day for the, you know, that they had for Easter, you know, and I'm sure there's other businesses, you know, that even for their to-go business or even now that salons, you know, are back open, et cetera, some of the other, you know, businesses that are in town that they'd like to get word out as to what their hours are, when they're open, or if they have any specials or, you know, the fact is, is just to let, you know, the public know that they are back open again and they are making appointments or, you know, what their hours of operations are, you know, for to-go, you know, restaurant, you know, food business. So Mr. Sizowski, did you have another comment?
You know, Stacy mentioned something, it kind of triggered it, you know, on that list of organizations, we got the, the Fort Collins DDA was on there and that, that's the classic group marketing effort that you'd see come out of like a shopping mall. Hey, come visit our stores or whatever. I assume that our, our Windsor DDA can similarly be involved in this from a, a group marketing for their members. But obviously we've got a, a bunch of other businesses in Windsor. It's a Chamber of Commerce, also a potential partner in, in this promotion advertising effort. And Stacy, again, I think we'll just let you guys kind of noodle through that and make a recommendation. That may be money better spent.
Mr. Sizowski, I'll, I'll say that, you know, being recently in tune with the Chamber of Commerce and sitting on their, their board as liaison, I would say that they're in a time of reorganization right now. They go to hire their next executive director and I'm not exactly sure if they're in the, I mean, they, they have somebody right now that working on a part-time basis that has the ability to, you know, flush out via email and social media what, you know, can be done, but they're, they're not up to full scale right now. And the membership of the chamber could be looking to be improved here as well to make it more effective. So Mr. Carpenter, did you have another comment you'd like to add?
Just a, just a follow-up thought on the social media thing. And I do agree with the Chamber of Commerce too. I think it's an excellent way to get them involved, to get out there and go talk to these businesses and explain the chamber and find out what they need as well, but that might not be fast enough. And it seems to me here now, since we've brought a couple of members, Shane, 176 dollars isn't going to go very far. You know, with any kind of businesses, it's going to cost us more than that to track it and get it back. So I don't know if that's really a viable idea, but that's social media again, just to plug it again. I would think as a business owner, when you can zero into 80550 on Facebook, for example, and you can see immediate results and you can see the town pushing these new businesses out there for new businesses. I would think that that would have a lot more energy to it and goodwill to it, both on the town side and in business direction as well. And something that can happen pretty quickly and only a fraction of 189,000 dollars you'd have to use as an immediate one. That's it.
Well, and, and what, well, no, I, I, all I would add, not to fill dead air time here, but just to
Mr. Sizowski brought up, it's, you know, and, and the Weld County Commissioners found themselves, you know, in this argument too with the, who's picking winners and losers and you know, we don't have an unlimited budget. So, you know, I, that's where I kind of wanted it to, to be a conversation with staff as to, you know, is this a first come, first served, you know, type situation? You know, is it, you know, maybe not every business in town is struggling, you know. You know, there, there could be certain operations, certain sectors of, of the business community that, that aren't in, in a situation where they're even needing, you know, minor, minor support, nor do they, nor, nor may they think that it's worth their time to fill out the paperwork for a few hundred bucks or, or whatever the, the dollar amount may be because we, we know it won't be, you know, a, a large dollar amount. So you know, the heart of the conversation tonight was just to start the conversation and get kind of some feedback of what everybody is thinking so that we weren't starting this conversation or having this kind of conversation next Monday night. Mr. Carpenter, did you have another?
No, I'm just laughing. You, you got my feedback.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? Any other thoughts? Any member of staff wanted to have any comment on this or questions?
Yeah, I, I do think that there's a lot of traction with what Stacy said. I, I think the idea of doing social media presence, and again, you know, this could be where the town contracts with a third party. Where we could make available a certain number of hours to each local business. So where we need to get again, a limited amount of money, you take like 50,000. If we could do 250 dollars to support per business, that's 200 businesses we could give that support to. You know, I don't know if that's five hours of social media help. I think, I think we could maybe have something where we take fairly limited resources and stretch it out and, and I think apply it to our business community where they need it. So, you know, I obviously need to frame this out with Stacy and with our comms team, but I think instead of doing it internally, I think it's a place where we could contract with a third party and really turn them loose here. And I think the chamber does have in the library as well, has some help. So I, I think it would be good to bring in all these agencies together and see what we could, you know, kind of muster for our business community together. So anyway, I, I think we've got some good suggestions coming out from the board. I think, you know, staff can work on these ideas and try to frame them up a little bit better for you next time. And again, I just think that if we were going to do just a grant program with straight cash, I think we'd run out pretty quickly. I think if we want to partner with some other agencies to do some loans and have some really targeted grant opportunities like this, I think we'll at least have a couple of programs that people can take advantage of.
Well, and there may be businesses that say, hey, I don't need a few hundred dollars, but some advertising around town, you know, like you were saying, could carry a much larger price tag, you know, of value, you know, to the business, you know, versus whatever their, their portion of the pie might be.
Right. And, and the barest entry could be almost nothing. We could really just say, you know what, we know your business in town, you've got a license, you qualify. So, you know, we, we could keep the paperwork de minimis and, and really put that kind of effort out.
And I'm by no means trying to say that the chamber or the DDA should be, you know, poo-pooed or be excluded from being able to contribute or, you know, be able to target their businesses or you know, the members of the, the DDA in their geographical area and/or the chamber and the, the reach that they have too. So I think it is all the above approach to being able to facilitate the businesses in Windsor. So Stacy, did you have any other thoughts?
No, I think Shane and I'll, I'll have a discussion and hopefully be able to bring something back to you that, that kind of hopefully satisfies the whole entire board for this first step.
Okay. Any other? Hands raised? Okay. All right. Well then, we'll let staff come back to us. We'll readdress this next Monday night at our work session prior to our board meeting. Item number four on our agenda tonight's, future meetings. Future town board meetings, future dates on the calendar. Mr. Hale, did you have any comments about anything that's on here?
No, sir. If there's any questions, I can answer those. And I do have one more comment, Mayor, after.
Okay. Any comments from the town board or staff regarding future, future agendas on our meeting schedule?
I'm saying none, sir.
Okay. Mr. Hale, I'll let you go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. So, so this is just kind of the, the last brief for the board. So I think I've mentioned, it's maybe come across in the weekly as well as some other COVID updates. The staff's had a lot of discussions about the Fourth of July and specifically our concern about trying to still hold a fireworks show in town. You know, we, we talked, you know, we twisted this up in a lot of ways, talked about moving the location, talked about trying to isolate parks and close them down. And honestly, you know, we continue to
And honestly, you know, we continue to get to the same conclusion, which is not understanding where the state is going to be, we're safer at home or whatever level of protection we're going to be in as it applies to group assembly. It's really hard to responsibly move forward with a fireworks show right now. Specifically because now's the time when we have to sign the contract. I'll let the board know that that contract is about fifty thousand dollars. And again, this isn't just a financial decision. If it was just the money, I think just to celebrate our freedom and liberty and give people some hope, I'd say let's, let's fire it. But, you know, the, the contracts we've talked to, we've texted them about the ability of signing the contract now and maybe being able to move it further down in the year. So if we, if we signed the contract and we couldn't have the event, could we hold it over Harvest Fest? Could we use some other time of year? And, and at least the response that I've heard back is no, if you sign a contract for the Fourth, you fire them or you pay us either way. And so given all that, you know, we're really ready to kind of do that press release and let the public know, hey, look, sorry, we're going to have to cancel the Fourth of July fireworks. But I'll tell you that, that this is among as hard of a decision as I've had to do during COVID so far. I mean, this was really tough, you know, this is America's holiday. We really haven't taken this lightly. But I just wanted to kind of check in with the board because we're getting ready to do that press release. I certainly don't want to catch anybody off guard. So I wanted to hear kind of any discussion or question from the board right now.
Mr. Zizlowski, did you have a comment to that?
Actually, the comment came up before that. And it really related only to the upcoming meetings. Because we sort of have started moving these to four P M., but I see that starting on the eighteenth of May, we're back to the six P M. kind of timeframe cycle. I just wanted to confirm that was true as I have my calendar.
Yes, sir. I, I think that's typo. I'm sorry. We're, if we have a public hearing already scheduled and it's already been posted at seven P M., we will have that work session at six, because it's really awkward to, you know. But, but if, if we don't have any public hearing that night or if it's been posted at five P M., then we'll have it at four. So I'm, I'm sorry for the confusion. I feel like every week when I have the, the agenda meeting with staff, I'm like, oh, wait, when is that posted? When we have to do it? So maybe if the board can continue to make four P M. work, we will try to have them at four unless we have a public hearing that's already been scheduled at seven. And I see Ian and Crystal are both online, and so I don't know if we already have a hearing scheduled at seven or if that's a typo.
The May eleventh, you have it at four. The eighteenth, you have it at six in terms of work session.
So, so the eighteenth would definitely be at four because we wouldn't have an evening meeting that night. So that would definitely be a four P M. meeting.
Yeah. Okay, and I guess quickly on the fireworks. God, I feel your pain. I'd hate to do this too. Some time ago, I was talking to Eric and I said, you know, ourselves, the local communities around here, Timneth, you know, we're all sort of having our own fireworks. And I said, you know, and yet budgetarily, we're all struggling a little bit. What if we did a group firework with three or four communities with Timneth and Severance and Windsor? And, and rotated where you had them, but together, we could probably afford a bigger display. Now, Eric doesn't address this year's question of whether we can have them at all, but maybe something to think about if budget constraints are an issue going forward.
Mr. Wilson, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I think, you know, I, I think our hands are kind of tied on this year's Fourth of July fireworks display because spending that kind of money in chain is probably a couple hundred thousand, correct?
It, it's about fifty thousand dollars for the display. That, that doesn't count overtime, all the staffing, but just the fireworks itself is about fifty thousand.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, Windsor, I, I think we've always done a great Fourth of July. You know, a lot of it has to do with our venue at Boardwalk Park. And, and I honestly, you know.
I'm biased, but I feel like we do a better job than a lot of the surrounding communities. But as far as, you know, scheduling an event where lots of people show up in a crowded area two, two months from now, it's, it's not, you know, we, we could just be flushing that money down the drain, you know what I mean? And so if we're going that route, I support it. The only thing I throw out is, you know, we can't say, let's do it on the Fourth and if we can't do it, let's bump it out. Maybe we just take it and do it, you know, later anyway, you know. Harvest Festival would be kind of a nice addition. But I mean, that, that would, I mean, if everyone agreed, I mean, that's just throwing it out there. It's another possibility.
Well, and I think that we, we have traditionally had some fireworks with Harvest Festival. And staff plan is right now to, to maybe take ten thousand dollars of that fifty thousand dollar budget for Harvest Festival. And again, we would have an, an additional month or so to make that call. So again, you know, we're going to get to that point with Harvest Festival where we're going to need to book up these folks. And so I think we'll probably have less lead time needed for Harvest Fest, but it is Labor Day weekend, so maybe not tons more. But yes, I, I would, I would love if we could still have some kind of Fourth, some kind of fireworks celebration later this year. You know, whenever that was. But again, right now, just having this uncertainty from the state and this virus, it seems irresponsible to pledge that much money towards an event when you don't know if you can actually have it.
Right. And before you brought this up, I didn't think there could be anything less popular than the recycling decision. But this one's definitely going to get a lot of chatter. And I, I think if we throw it out there that we're going to give our true best effort to try to do something later, possibly during Harvest Festival. I, I think to put it out there, we don't, we don't want to just, you know, cancel all celebrations. We, we want to hopefully do, do something later. I, I think that might be part of the communication, just take that into consideration.
Well, Mr. Hale, to ask you this, is, is there another venue site within Windsor that we could do it? Like up on, I'm not trying to speak for a certain land developer or anything, but is there another location that might work? Like up on the top of Rain Dance or something where everybody could see it from across town and stay at home or something like that, or not have to be congregating at Boardwalk Park and more of a confined quarters type of area? I'm just throwing out another idea, not that staff hasn't maybe already crossed that bridge, but.
Right, and thank you, Mayor. And, and we did actually discuss that as recently, again, as today. The, the challenge is, is we still think that e- even if we got a, a really high location to shoot it, what prevents people from still congregating at the high school and the middle school and one of our twenty-six parks? You know, and so I, I think that we, you know, the, the Fourth really is a holiday where people like to get together and barbecue and hang out. So I, I think by having this show, we would be inviting that. Secondly, you know, I just saw the press release today that Fort Collins had canceled theirs. And so we have our largest neighbor to the west where we could be inviting people if we have an advertised show. You know, I'm still not certain, you know, Timneth hasn't made the call. They could still have their show this year.
Yeah, they haven't made the call, but their mayor reached out to all the other mayors over the weekend, wanting to know what everybody else was doing and then.
Everybody else in the city manager. And then Severance right now, for their Severance Days, has tentatively scheduled, or has tentatively canceled their fireworks. Same in Johnstown for their celebration, so, and then Greeley Stampede they had. And now the fireworks seem to be coming back. And so.
Well, and in fact, it sounds like the city of Greeley's actually added more money into it to make it an even bigger display than they normally have, is what Mr. Gates had replied to the other mayors, that they, they want, instead of the, you know, the Greeley Stampede fireworks happen.
Concerts over that night. And I guess because none of that's going on, they're putting extra money in because it's actually going to be less cost to the city of Greeley. So Greeley's moving forward and they're going to have a bigger show than they normally do.
Right, so, so anyway, I, I think just to, to circle back here. So I think we did talk about moving the location. And I think that, that the location you mentioned, that person has always been really favorable to working with the town. I'm certain they can make that happen. Again, our concern is that there would still be, we'd be inviting people to congregate. I think we said, yeah, please stay in your back cartiers. Not everybody would. And even if we had every Windsor resident who did that, if, if we were one of the only area shows that night, I think we would still be inviting a lot of people from out of town into our parks and into our public spaces. So that's kind of where, where staff would continue to talk about and say, can we responsibly do this? Can we do it and, and feel responsible not knowing what the distancing requirements will be on the Fourth?
Mr. Bennett, do you have a comment on this?
Yeah, you know, I absolutely love fireworks, but we really should cancel it for a couple of reasons. One, we don't know where we're going to be with this virus thing in July. If indeed there is a surge, you know, nobody knows if that's going to happen or not. And like Mr. Hale said, we could be back to stay at home. So we just don't know what that picture looks like. The other thing I'm thinking about is, we just had a conversation about how to help local businesses. And for us to go out and spend fifty thousand dollars on some big firecrackers, which I love, while maybe some of our local businesses can't recover because we couldn't help them enough, that would feel awkward to me. The other thing Mr. Hale said is very important. It's really important to celebrate our nation. That's, that's a big deal. Maybe there's some other creative ways of doing it. Maybe it could be tied into some discounts at restaurants. I know there's a restaurant in Loveland that on Fridays, if you wear red and in honor of veterans, they give you a slight discount. So maybe there's some creative ideas out there, things we could do the week of the Fourth of July to still celebrate our, our country without spending a lot of money in, in the time that we don't know what the conditions are going to be.
Mr. Carpenter, did you have another comment?
Well, I'm beginning to believe that I'm the one that's got the pretty half, pretty full glass of optimism here, you know? But I think we're going to be passing up an opportunity to do the very thing that we were talking about all night long and that's to give back to the people somehow, some way. Maybe Ken's right, it's a different way. But what I'm listening here, it doesn't really seem like it's about the fireworks. It seems like it's about the gathering of people. So, you know, and then everything that I'm hearing about, and we're taking the position of doom. Everything that I'm hearing about, there in two months from now, I don't think we have any other restrictions really to speak of. Isn't everything going to be open by then? Including gon concerts, including public gathering spaces and everything else under today's ideas? You know, so we're two months down the road here. I don't know, maybe a picnic, maybe free hamburgers and hot dogs for everyone that wants to come through the park. Something, but that still causes a gathering too, but we're missing an opportunity in my opinion. And we're taking a position of not being supportive to opening business again. My opinion.
Those are good thoughts, Mr. Carpenter. Do we have any other? Mike, you know, Mr. Carpenter, I mean, to address what you brought up. I think that what, you know, the position that we're at is where we've reached the drop dead date on having to make a decision on doing the fireworks display. And we do not have the green light from the governor as of right now that we can know beyond a shadow of a doubt we're going to be able to do it at that point. And if we've committed those dollars and aren't able to shoot the fireworks off, then it is a waste of taxpayer dollar. So it's a, it's a highly educated gamble at this point. And I don't know if anybody's willing to go that route with the large price tag on the line.
Well, if those fireworks could be used for Harvest Fest, it didn't work out, did it?
Well, while we're hearing from the vendors.
Sure, the fireworks don't go bad.
No, if, if we booked them for the Fourth and we don't end up utilizing them, I believe the contract, we just pay them out. Staff specifically asked, we could carry that contract if they didn't work for the Fourth. And Eric Lucas is on the line, but that, that's my sense that, you know, because that was our first take is, can we book it and, you know, kind of earmark that for a future event? And I don't believe that they are willing to honor that. I think if we book it for the Fourth, we fire them or we write the check.
Mr. Lucas, did you have a thought on that or?
That, that's correct. I didn't quite catch Mr. Carpenter's total question if he would eat that piece of.
Well, essentially what he was asking was, if we can't end up shooting off the fireworks on the Fourth of July, could we retain those fireworks to like Harvest Fest weekend or something like that?
So that is a different vendor. So Harvest Festival contracts with a totally different vendor, so it's not like we could schedule it, delay the Fourth and say, hey, shoot them with the Harvest Festival. The only thing we could consider doing would be to supplement the dollars with the Harvest Festival in some form, like Shane had said earlier. But we would need to make that decision fairly soon as well, given the Harvest Festival would have to do the same thing we're, we're debating now, which is sign a contract with their vendor. The other thing you need to remember is adding a little bit of dollars doesn't necessarily make a better show. So for example, we went from a thirty-two thousand dollar show last year to nearly fifty thousand dollar show this year to get the exact same show due to the tariffs that are imposed right now on China.
All right, Mr. Lucas. Mr. Talon, did you have a comment?
Yes, I was just listening to all the opinions and I'm, I'm at the stage right now where I think that we need to hold off on the fireworks. We've got, we've got bigger issues with the town, with, with the businesses in town. And I just feel that this, you know, even though it is a celebration, we need to put that money to better use as far as getting this town back up and running. If we can get our businesses up and running, get them back into full throttle, then the Harvest Festival is going to be another celebration. But if we're waiting and we use this and then we find out that we can't do it because of the state, then we just wasted money. And I don't think that we need to do that, in my opinion.
Mr. Talon, that's, that's, those are good comments. Mr. Zizlowski, have a comment you'd like to?
A quick comment, because there was a, I think somebody was mentioning a developer that has land in a high spot, but I believe that the developer often arranges for a flyover on Fourth of July. And I got to tell you, that puts chills in my spine when I see that. I wonder if there's a way, you know, everybody, when they were going to do the flyover a few weeks ago, gosh, everybody was standing out in their backyard. That is something we could do that absolutely, to my mind, creates a, a spirit of, you know, what it is to be a US citizen. So I'm wondering if that developer is doing it again, if we can somehow join in that and perhaps have expanded another, expand some element of the flyover. Because that, that's fun stuff.
I guess that's something that we can find out or figure.
Figuring that or not. Mr. Talon, did you have another comment?
No, that's a good idea, Dave. I think that's a good idea.
Well, I, I, in, in following up on what Mr. Zizlowski just said, I just got an email while we were sitting here tonight from Mr. Cory Gardner, our state senator's office, saying that that one hundred and fortieth wing of the Colorado Air National Guard is going to be doing an F-16 Fighting Falcon aircraft flyover around northern Colorado, same as what the Thunderbirds did. It's going to be this coming Wednesday evening from four thirty to six o'clock. They're going to be flying from Buckley up to Sterling, the correctional facility where they got an outbreak, all the way to Greeley, then to Fort Collins. Then they're actually going to go up to Aspen Vale and then come back down to Littleton, to the Colorado Springs. They're going to do the whole thing in under an hour. So keep, keep your eye out for them. They're doing the, it's for the same, supporting our first responders and the people that are taking care of the sick at all of the different hospitals that are around. So Mr. Gardner's office wanted to get the word out that that's going to be happening on Wednesday evening. But that is the same group of folks that normally do the flyover, I know, on the Fourth of July. And all they, and, and really what it is, is they know that Mr. Lynn does his charity golf tournament on the Fourth of July, which I don't even know if he's doing this year. And therefore, because they're doing the veteran charity golf tournament, the Buckley Air National Guard typically finds out about it and they swing up here really quick on their way to do other flyovers, which they're doing around the state on that day. You know, flying over Coors Field or, you know, other events that are going on. And we're not sure if those other events are going to be even occurring. So I'm not sure if that flyover will still take place this year, but I'm sure they'll give it their best effort, so. Did anybody else have any other thoughts? Do we have any other hands raised, comments? No? All right, staff, we're good. Mr. Carter, did you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, with that, I guess we will call this night, this evening's evening work session to its conclusion. And I thank all of you for joining us this evening. Have a wonderful evening and we will be in touch. and we will be in touch next Wednesday, next Monday night, if not before. Thank you so much. Have a good night.